Okay. John, Jennifer's virtual, I don't know, I haven't heard anything from Laura, so. All right, and Jennifer can hear us and everything? Yeah, okay, she's nodding. So I don't know about Councilmember Mercer, so I'm just gonna go ahead and get us going, because I don't want to run over again like last time. So I'm gonna call the committee of the whole meeting to order at 5:33. And first up, the good of the order, does anyone have anything for the good of the order today? Councilmember Naplin.
There we go. Sorry, it wasn't unmuting. I had sent an email yesterday to Director Landcheski, and I don't know if he is attending virtually, or...
He stepped out for a minute, but he'll be back soon.
Yeah, he gave me some great information back to an answer, as an answer to a question regarding, you know, different grants that are out there that we're considering applying for, or maybe are in the process of putting together an application. And maybe when he comes back in, he can, he can share what he shared with me.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so, thank you. Next item review of the regular meeting agenda. Let me just scroll down here. If you guys had a chance to look through what was on consent agenda, and then I'm assuming, because I see appointment of, to planning commission and library board, none of them are coming in person or virtually, do we know, or?
They're not.
They're not, okay. Okay, did anyone have anything on the agenda that? No? Okay. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and move to our first agenda item, draft scope of work for arts community engagement. I'll hand this over to Director Thomas and Tammy Kellogg.
At the same time, so good evening, council and mayor. This evening, we have a draft scope of work. We do have at least one, a couple minor adjustments to that that we noticed a little bit last minute. So we'll go over the scope of work, the changes, but I also wanted to let council know that I did ask some questions today. I talked to three councilmembers about essentially the community art engagement. So after, after going through the scope of work, if those three councilmembers want to provide their questions, and we can talk about what some of the either answers are or the solutions. I think that they were all really good questions and need to come to council for discussion. There were a tiny, kind of a tiny, we're a little on staff, so are we gonna be able to have the capacity to do that? And then just some of the terminology, community arts, what does that mean? And even to talk a little bit about our engagement with DFA. I will let you go ahead and go through these good work, but I'll be there looking at your questions as well.
Okay.
Back to the podium over just a little bit, so that people can see you.
This way?
Yeah. Put over there.
There you go.
Sounds good. Hi.
I'm back again.
I don't know that I got a chance to meet you. Last time, I was there with the council members, other councilmembers, and I think you came in at the last minute, Tammy Kellogg. And I've been asked to put together a proposal to help you guys work through both some opportunities around the arts and bringing the arts community together and putting together a arts plan for the city, and also working on some issues between DFA and the city specifically. So after I met with you guys last time, listened to your comments and suggestions and things that you thought were important from the first draft of the scope, I identified a couple changes, and some of those are highlighted in yellow in the, in the scope that you guys got. It was put together hastily between that meeting and this meeting, so there are a couple changes that I need to, to alert you to. So I think if we start up with the top to look at, to making sure that we have the correct objectives and outcomes that you're looking for, you'll see that there's a, two items that are highlighted there. So as I thought through what I think is probably the best approach, it was to not collapse issues that are specific to DFA and the city into something with the larger arts community, rather to call out a smaller subset meeting. So I'm proposing in the objectives there, that objective A is to work in improving the relationship between the city and the arts community in general. And then a subset for that is specifically working on some issues between DFA and their performing arts center, and as that relates to the city. So work specifically in that issue, and then also work on the bigger, broader issue. So that's added in there. And then I think the other thing that became apparent in talking to you guys last time was that there are some key messages that need to get agreed to. For every time, every time that we meet with a group, we need to have a consistent set of messages coming out of that meeting. And so I'm building in time in each one of those sessions, so that before we leave, whoever the group is, whether that's the group of a whole arts community and the council, or whether it's that smaller one with DFA, every time we do that, we'll be working on coming out with some key messages. In terms of the first part of it, those are the only two changes. There's a little bit of languaging where I was, I was pretty sloppily using like the arts community as a, as a general sense, and then the performing arts center. So I'll clean that up, make sure that that is clear. And let's see, there is an added scope of work item that is not highlighted, which is at the end of C. And that was, in talking with Laura after the last meeting, I realized that it would be helpful, she asked if I could put together a consultant's scope of work for the strategic arts plan, so that that can go out to bid for a consultant. So basically, it's just to give her an extra pair of hands to help do that, so that's added in as well. Any thoughts, comments, reactions thus far? Otherwise, I'll start moving into the bigger part of our meeting. Last time was talking about, well, how do we do this actually? And should we do this with the council as a whole? We talked through a couple options, and so both of those two options are in front of you now. And both of those two options, whether we use the full council and an exact match of the arts community, so a seven and seven, or whether we use a smaller subset of this group, which would be less than your quorum, a three and a three representative. Both of those include the option of having that one standalone meeting between whatever size of group we decide here and DFA. So anything so far on the first page, which is both clarifying the outcomes and talking a little bit about the options, and then I'll stop, and we can actually have some discussion around the options, if you would like, before we get into the process of how we might deliver on the services.
Go ahead, Councilmember Shaker.
Let's see, with option A, the smaller group, on the arts community side of things, you say three or more arts community representatives, but my concern is each organization's gonna feel they need to be represented on, on that, or potentially feel they need to be represented with, you know, with their own representative. How many would that be, or how many, you know, how many organizations are we talking about total? I guess I'm not sure.
There are close, there's probably six, seven, maybe even eight, depending on what we define as an arts organization.
With, with that in mind, I guess it's interesting to me how those, you know, if there's only three representatives from the arts community side, how those would be chosen, and what potential, you know, issues that might be there in choosing some, you know, someone else to choose, to, to represent my, you know, my organization. Any thoughts on that, Tammy?
When we were here working in that last session, I was actually really lobbying for the three and three. And the reason I was doing that is primarily for the three that is from your group.
Yeah.
I think that we could go with the three plus. It's really a matter of, do you, do you want roles and responsibilities kinds of discussions? Or visioning kinds of discussions to all be in open public meetings? So to answer your question, I do not know how you would select those from among the seven. But the one thing I want to point out is that, that what we're doing with this phase is we're helping to resolve some issues between DFA and the city.
Sure.
Bigger picture, what we're doing is we're readying the, the city and the organizations, the all seven, eight of those, to get ready to do that strategic plan for arts. And so it's not essential that everyone is available or involved in this readying phase, although we did insert a survey in a part of the scope of work here. And so if you read through to that, you'll see, so we're surveying all of those organizations.
Good.
So we get a little, and we could also survey them and say, are you interested in serving on the smaller subset group?
Okay.
That can be one way of doing it.
Yeah, good, good. And just, so just so I'm clear, in my opinion, I do like the smaller subset of the council, you know, three councilmembers. It's just unclear to me what, you know, arts community representatives would be, you know, would be present on that. It'd be three and three, or three and seven, three or eight, or whatever.
Yeah.
But, you know, we can, we can still decide that. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think the bigger issue, which Laura alerted me to that came up from some councilmembers, is around tiny. So I'll, I'll let you folks weigh in on that as well. But it may be that it's not the right time right now to work with a larger arts community anyway, because they'll be busy starting to, so. Anything else? Yep.
So on, on option A, I mean, the biggest problem with this is, when you say, on option B, you got a seven councilmembers, right? I mean, it really is like herding the cats.
Yeah.
If you're waiting on seven councilmembers, all those could just online, and have seven arts organizations, nothing's gonna be done. Right?
Yeah.
So we'll forever be kicking the can down, not getting anything done. Option A to me is three or more councilmembers, not just three, three is minimum, just like three or more arts community representatives. And that at least keeps things moving. It doesn't mean we can't have seven councilmembers and seven of the arts community, right?
Yeah.
To me, it's a three or more. That's, that's where my opinion is, like, let's get a minimum of three for each side, and let's have a conversation, move things forward. Otherwise, nothing's gonna be done. Forever. It's never will work out. Something's gonna be said.
That's my concern.
Someone's, you know. So that's the only kind of opinion I have on option A, is not just three customers, three or more, right?
And in reality, the three or more could, could go for either one.
Oh, exactly.
You know, the bottom line is...
That's the semantic, but I think it's key, it's like, you're not saying you want three of us, number four go away, you're like...
In, in option A, I am, because it becomes a not a public meeting.
That's the problem with four, four or more councilmembers, right?
Tammy, what, I was curious what the, what the thought process, is it just about it being a public meeting? Or about it not being open to the public versus being open to the public? Because you could still have option A, but have it be open to the public. So I just wasn't sure what the thought process was between that.
The thought process originally was that we had collapsed all of these outcomes, wanting all of these outcomes from a set group of meetings. And I didn't feel like it would be a very fruitful conversation to have the DFA conversation around what your interest is. These are the kinds of questions that they have, what your interest is in a perform, their performing arts center, and things like that. I didn't feel like that would be a very effective public conversation. So I was originally going with the smaller group of three and three, because it was not public, and we could have a more heartfelt conversation to get at issues and have them cleared up, resolved, and moved forward.
Yeah.
People tend to position themselves more when there is a larger group of, of, everyone does, myself included. Like, humans do this. It's a human nature thing when we have others involved. So smaller was better for solving what I would view as slightly more conflicted kind of issues. I don't think it is as important right now, the public, private, as long as you guys agree to having this one standalone, set aside meeting that just deals with DFA.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to follow, and then I'll go to Councilmember Lingle. I think for me personally, I, you know, anytime something's not open in a public, you know, just the people in that room knew what was said, and it can get translated in different ways outside of the room. So while I, of course, wouldn't want, like, anyone to just be able to speak at the meeting, I personally would want it to be open to the public, but Councilmember Lingle, go ahead.
Um, I have two sets. On the issue of option A versus option B, as I read through the materials, I noticed that there was a notation from the consultant that you could really have more people participate in either one of the options theoretically. And so, and when I looked at the scope of work, I noticed that that very first thing is the survey. And I asked Laura a question about the survey, you know, is this, are we gonna, is it something like, we might send out some questions in advance? And she said, yes, that was the plan. So what I like is the idea of getting those survey questions out there. With your question that you mentioned just now, would you be interested in participating? If more than three want to participate, if all seven do, we work with it, right? That's a good thing. And to Mayor Chell Potem's point, with something like this that could be either a catalyst in a really positive direction, I think, I don't think, I think there's no reason not to have it open to the public, I guess.
Yeah.
So that's my comments on A and B. I want to address specifically the meeting for DFA. So I'll pass a couple of these down here. I would give you, and you can have the mayor and the other. The, the, the project with DFA was one of the first big projects I was exposed to at the city, and that was back in July of 2019. And why it was, you know, I was, I've been in development, working with nonprofits my entire career, so I was, I was kind of excited, right? And I get this packet, and I, God knows how many pages were in that packet. But, but I've just passed out to you was from the hearing examiner, and you can just see the list of activity around this project. And in addition to this, there are a number of memos that illustrate very nicely how hard the city has worked to make this project possible. So when you look at, if you go to the full pack, full presentation on July the 16th, 2019, which I encourage councilmembers to do, I think you will see here again that there is a long, long history of the city being great, giving grace to a project that never really formed. And our previous mayor, I think rightly told them that what their original vision was, was no longer, and we were out. And yet, grace came in again and gave them more opportunity. But the project really has not advanced for a very, very long time. And I'm my, I'm, I'm the one walking out the door, so this is easy maybe for me to say. But what I would like to see is that our mayor and our mayor Potem sit down with the president of their board, which means executives to executive, and have, have this conversation, and hopefully inspire them to move on. And that we want them to move on. Sam Blast was fantastic. We, we don't want anybody to fail, but I think that that might be, show the respect of the city to someone who's more current with DFA. The last thing I would say is, from the very beginning, I mean, when you're a grant maker, you learn how to analyze finances. Nora, Laura knows that I do this. And I actually have a file on their tax returns since going back, I think, to 2015. And there again, what you're going to see is, unfortunately, a nonprofit that is not evolving enough to even come close to taking on a project like this. This project, based on the last number, represents a $1,750 expenditure for each resident of the city of Duval right now. That just gives you an idea of the magnitude of the situation. I'm happy to send the tax returns out to councilmembers, so they can study them and think about them themselves. I firmly believe we should invest in capacity building, which means you give money to organizations to help them grow if you're committed to that work, that work. But I, I, I just, I just felt like after all this, I had to say something. The, the staff work has been extraordinary on this. They've worked, these two directors have worked on this. When you look at that, that chronology, I mean, they, they must have sadness losing the project. I just felt like I had to speak up. So I appreciate that.
That's my recommendation.
I appreciate that. I appreciate this document, and I appreciate the modified suggestion that instead of it being like a three to three, three to three conversation, it is your executive team to their executive team, which could be the very exactly right group of people to meet. Yeah. Makes sense. Makes sense to me, anyway. Interested in your reactions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hope.
So I am in agreement with our mayor Potem that there's no reason that these meetings can't be public. I, I highly recommend it. And I like the idea of our leaders to meet with the DFA's and their current president. I think that would be a great start.
Can I ask a question? Because I, I don't know their structure. Do they have an executive team more than their current president? Would there be a similar two to two or three to three that? I doubt it. Okay. Nobody's, nobody's been able to tell us who the, you know, what the status is of their board.
Okay, they do have a board. They do have a president. I'm not sure if they have an assigned vice president, but assuming if they're running properly as a nonprofit, they should.
Okay.
I'm just not sure who that person is.
It's something I could follow up on, and that's the, the structure that you would prefer, because I do think that's...
Oh, I see Councilmember Naplin has her hand up.
Yeah, I believe they have a vice president. I think I met her just the other day. So I couldn't, just socially, I, I didn't discuss DFA at all, but I became aware. So I believe they do have a vice president.
Councilmember Hope, did you have your hand up again, or did you get to finish? Okay. All right, Councilmember Isaacson.
So statement for assumption, I'm assuming option A, when we talk about three councilmembers and careful saying preventing it from being open to public, I don't think you intend to prevent it.
No.
Your intention is to simplify it.
And my intention is to simplify it.
So I think what we owe the, the arts community is if we're gonna have more than four, more than three show up, is a time coordinate that, right? And that timeline needs to be laid out, so it doesn't put any trouble. So there needs to be a clear timeline, okay, are you gonna have four people show up or not? So you can coordinate the public parts of it. Because the simplification process is important for the arts community, because it's people volunteering, right?
Yeah.
So I, you know, I think we should go with A, but we as a council owe them that respect to say, are we gonna have four people show up? It can't be last minute. And or if we do, one of us can't, so we can't say, well, we can have a meeting, now we're kicking the can again, because we could commit to three or less people to show up. And we write the, kind of the procedures and the rules, it's gonna be key to us too. So, so I'm here now. No, sorry, you can't be here. Why? Because it can't be public now.
Yeah.
If I show up last minute.
So it sounds like the most of you are saying have it be a larger number, but have it be the number that wants to participate. That's, that's what I'm hearing, as, as, and so, sorry, Jennifer, I, I don't see you. I'm hoping your head will be nodding on that as well, because from the room, what I'm hearing is, make it be a, a small group, but whatever the number is that wants to participate from this group, and if it's more than three, it's fine, because it's a public meeting. And I think as long as we are having executive to executive dealing with a subset of the issues, then it's, it's fine, and have it be an open meeting. And I just want to be, what you, what you raised for me led me to think that I should probably run through this services provided. So in addition to the survey, there would be a time where we would work with the city to put together invitations and schedule the workshop sessions. So those would all be scheduled way in advance, so. And we would let people know in the invitation, so commitment to showing up if you feel like you can't. You know, we'll work through all those issues, like, can you have an alternate and things like that?
Or take the conservative route and say, every meeting's gonna be public. Then we, then we don't have to react last minute, say, there was a meeting in public, and it's three, so we, we still have the ability to continue with the meeting.
Yeah.
Not say, oh, four showed up, we can't do it now, because the public's not invited, invite the public every time. It's fear of us, and rage of us, we're still legal, and we're still meet the intent of the rules. And we still accomplish what needs to be done for us as, as a, as a member, as a candidate.
Director Thomas, you had your hand up, and then we'll go across my...
Essentially, everybody's coming to that conclusion. I would say, you know, obviously, all the meetings will be open to public, that's consistency. But I would also say there does need to be a commitment of regular attendance by council at these meetings as well, just for continuity and consistency as well. And so if we're making a public meeting, I really feel that, you know, we should have as many councilmembers show up, and maybe there should be a commitment, that there are, is a dedicated group that will be at all of those meetings, just for consistent continuity, so that we can move forward as well. And we'll always be recording back, but I think it's gonna be important to those groups that they seem to be consistently the same, the same basis. So maybe there's four that are committed to it, or whatever that is, and then there's kind of those that might float, because they have different work commitments, and they know that they're not gonna be able to potentially meet that obligation.
Councilmember Hope?
I just wanted to mention that the decisions can't be made with three councilmembers at the table. So if we're going to be having big discussions about the performing arts, it has to, that has to include the entire council, my eyes.
Yeah. So, so just to clarify, the, the suggestion was that I work in advance with your full council on what your, your answers to a set of questions before we go into, before this group goes into a meeting with DFA. They have the same set of questions, Tammy, or a similar set of questions to answer.
And just to Councilmember Hope's point, to clarify, meeting with a group, even if it's subject to OPMA, you can't make a decision unless it's listed on the agenda as a council. So you don't have to worry about the making a decision. There's nothing wrong with having discussion and having consensus, but any official decisions by the group have to be made at a formal council meeting, or especially to identify that item.
So you're somewhat of a recommendation with this?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. It's confusing, especially as we're coming out of the COVID rolls, so just want to make that clear for folks.
Others? So in a, a group?
Just, just for my clarification, I guess, so we're really talking two sets of meetings here. One, kind of the executive level executive of the, only the DFA?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, the small group meeting, we're talking about a subset of the council and more than the DFA participating.
Yes. We're, we'll survey... We'll survey the arts community to figure out what member of them would like to participate. You guys will name, what I think Laura is suggesting is a core set so that we can count on there being a core set of people from the council that show up. If you additional ones want to show up, they they certainly can.
Okay, good, good. No, I like I like those ideas. I guess my my other question is how do we choose that courses? Is that something we can do tonight? What what do you guys think?
Well, I guess that would, in my opinion, would just be whoever was interested and we could do that offline too. Or if you know that for sure you'd want to attend them all. I think a little bit of that would depend on what the dates and times are at the meeting. So yeah.
So just to clarify, that's one of the edits that that didn't make it into it. There there are free work sessions. So there is the one standalone with which is executive to executive. And then there are three core work sessions of the arts community and the council.
Okay.
Whatever those numbers are. And I think if you're agreeing to the scope and Laura can put it into your, to be able to take action at your next meeting, then perhaps you can think in between now and then about whether or not you would like to. Right now, the work sessions are are set at around somewhere between three to four hours. They probably will be more in the three hour length. There may be one of them that needs to be that four hour. Probably will be three, four, three. And let's see. And then the last item, which I probably should get some input on is is there are a couple items of ways to save save some consultant dollars if you want to. I included those in here for you to look at, like documentations of of those meetings. If you want to bring somebody who will do documentation for the meetings, you can save a little bit of funds there. And then there was also the last item, which is to help prep a scope of work for a strategic arts plan to be created. And and have that ready to go. And and that again is highlighted in yellow. I talked to to Laura briefly and she mentioned another small city having just produced one. And I and so my suggestion is I think city to cities should be able to be sharing these kinds of RFPs and documents so you don't have to recreate wheel. So maybe you go borrow one from another city, mark it up and have it meet your needs for here, but it doesn't require a wholesale starting from scratch. So there are a few things that could cut that down a little bit. The with the add of the 15 hours, it adds about 3,400. So the total is right around 18 to 19.
Councilmember Hope and then Lingle.
So how does it work if we commit to this? Are we? I'm I'm kind of concerned whether we're going to get our volunteers that will want to sit in this many hours of meetings, especially during the summer months. And I don't know if the council can push it off till fall because we'll be working on budget. So we're kind of in a tough spot. And so I guess my thought is what if we get into this and we find that we really don't have the arts community that wants to spend these many hours chatting with us about this? Maybe we don't. So does that mean then that we committed to 18, $19,000? Or is it kind of a?
No, I've always worked it. This is an up to amount. And and here's the other issue. Anytime you're dealing with issues about disagreements about how to move forward or planning issues related to the community or engagement issues, the the size and shape of it can change and should change based on the conditions that you find yourself in. So we could end up having one of the three to four hour ones with the community, but get enough from it between the survey and that, that you guys are ready to go. I'm not committing you to this dollar amount. Just want to get paid for the work I do and produce for it. My my comment was that if if folks have had a chance to read the the Community Development Administration report that's in here and seeing what's going on with our pipeline, it's not worth it to me to add writing up meeting minutes onto the plates of our employees at this time. You know, I I hopefully everybody read that that department report.
I was going to add to this because I did have really good council feedback from the councilmembers that talked to me today. I think that council really needs to decide. I think there's some things that we can do now. I talked to Tammy about this as well, which is start the survey, start this process. But I do believe that this is the art season. So I don't think we would necessarily get a good amount of in that we would need. So I think we could start that work later. I obviously understand that we'll be in budget, but we have to multitask and do many things as as a local government, as departments. So I think it's not something that we have to get done like in X amount of time. You know, sometimes it could take us 18 months, right? It could be where we do certain things that are really quick and certain things that might take more time. Sometimes meetings are quarterly. It's not like we're gonna have a meeting every month. So I think council needs to decide that. And one of the things that I heard from council was, okay, we don't have a city administrator right now. So who, you know, so who's really gonna manage this project per se? And then I know the mayor is bringing forward a communications and community engagement coordinator. So would that person fit in to potentially PM this project? You know, where is it gonna go and fit? And it's gonna be about four months before we have somebody hired and all things go well with the city administrator position. And maybe that's about the, you know, the community engagement type coordinator as well. So I just want to make sure we're not gonna force them ourselves. It's something that we that we can't do as well because it's important that we're successful. Because this is a big lift. This is something bold that we're gonna do. We not have this type of discussion.
That's great feedback. Anyone else? Uh, Councilmember Isaacson.
So maybe it was obvious to others, but I'm just trying to confirm. So what we're saying, so it's total cost is something of $15,000.
No, total total is between 18 to 19,000.
What's thirty four?
There was the thirty four, the third work session, some had that.
Who's billed that? DFA or the cities?
Cities.
The if you take her hourly rate and compute it, that's about a $2,000 item, I think, is what nine hours, was that right? I think you estimated a total of nine hours.
That's fifteen.
Oh, it was fifteen for the DFA piece?
Oh, no, no, the DFA one was nine. Sorry, 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 sorry. I did not understand the question. Yes. The meeting for DFA with this group is nine hours.
Right, time it's 227 dollars an hour, so.
Well, that's just huge. There's budget estimate, there's travel time, there's all these other costs. The numbers I'm looking at in this, we're saying this is cities cost.
This is all the city cost.
And so I'll just ask the counter question. So why is this cities cost, not DFA's cost?
I don't think that Tammy.
Oh, I don't think.
Do you want to go ahead, Director Thomas?
You know, your question is something that we talked about internally and even at Land Use Committee. It was a request by DFA back in December at the meeting. We brought it forward. I always knew professionally that it was going to likely fall on the city. I don't know that DFA has the resources to, you know, to participate financially. I'd like to see them participate in bodies and communication and moving forward. It's it's an opportunity cost that we'd be looking at. You could certainly ask for maybe some sort of dollar amount from them. I mean, that's within your purpose to do. So that's something that you would need to come from council. I don't think staff would want to weigh in on whether we recommend.
In my opinion, it's like, okay, we're trying to set up this, kind of banish this obviously relationship that fell apart. And I mean, I personally, as a representative of the community, would be like, okay, let's let's start here. We've got to be a transition phase to where DFA says, you know, we're gonna pick up a percentage or a hundred percent. I don't know what that is, but I think it's I'm not comfortable reaching out and saying I'm gonna commit our taxpayer's dollars or whatever to this on a regular basis. It's gonna be a period of transition of that type of cost, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. Because there's so many things. The arts are very important to me. Don't get me wrong. And they're very important, I think, to our community, but it's a I don't know, it's a hard time swallowing it, committing to that on an annual basis without maybe some ownership in transitioning that cost to the DFA. It's it's my opinion.
Just for clarification, are you talking about the standalone meeting with DFA? Because it's, I think that's just a one time thing.
It is. It is a one time.
Yeah. And then the rest of it is like the larger discussion with all of the arts organizations in Duval, but then there's.
I'm just looking. So you're talking 1,800 for the travel time?
No, DFA is estimated at.
2,043. And so the total package, I took the dates where there were travel and I added the travel time as a separate line item on there so that you could see it.
So we're saying this is a one time cost?
It's a one time cost, yes, yeah. The it's a one time cost to have a conversation with DFA. The rest of it is really your investment in readying this community and assessing before you write an RFP and spend a bunch of time and energy doing a strategic plan for the, a strategic arts plan. It's really sussing out, are we ready? Do we have the right ingredients and do we have people on the same page about wanting to do it? So that would be about 17,000 to 18,000 on that. It's just 2,000 on the conversation with DFA. DFA will participate, I assume, as a arts community representative on the other.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Just throw out a comment because that's a really good question that you asked about. And, you know, maybe if DFA was splitting the cost with us, they would.
Well, we are. Are we blunt?
Yeah. So that's just, I'll just throw that out there.
Councilmember.
And I apologize for joining late. I was following on the on the phone, but to weigh in a couple of things and circle back in some of this you've recovered. I think I'm in alignment with the option A. I do think you need a core working group and and then should be looking more broadly. And also on the question of public versus private, I think that the general consensus around the public meeting and and to encourage involvement and and not even create the perception that we're doing something behind closed doors, given some of the history of the projects. And I think is is really important. You know, I I think there are two parts in terms of your conversation on costs. I do think there, even though that's a a much smaller sum of a larger budget, there is something about having skin in the game in terms of as a motivation factor, particularly given some of Dot's comments in terms of the history and how this has evolved and really what we're looking to accomplish in this meeting. It might just be a token amount. It might be a commitment in another way, sort of. So I think that's something we can explore, but I think there is some value, even in just breaking the conversation to create a dialogue around it to, so that they're aware that we're viewing it with a specific type of lens. And 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 so that never, never hurts. I think the broader investment is really around what the community wants to do. And that's really sort of the central pillar reinforcing the engagement with the community, looking for new opportunities. Duval has evolved. And we really haven't done sort of this touch point in a while. So the needs and wants of the community may very well have evolved. And and so I I I think there's value in both the survey piece and then having those follow up scoping questions. But I do with with Laura, particularly given the summer months here, it's our window of nice weather. It's when we're trying to do things, we're with our families, we're traveling. There might be some initial kickoff and then I do think that we're likely to want to defer some of those touch points until a later date or take input from that initial meeting in terms of what the cadence should be. Because I know, now I'm hearing it from my family already, when we're traveling, when we're doing this. And 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 we want to have the right people in the room to have those conversations and get the ROI out of them.
I would add that if we're gonna ask for some of that skin in the game, which I always think there's an opportunity in that conversation. The most part, the last six months, we've driven the train of scope of work. So I think we have to go back to them and say, this is what we anticipate doing. We'd like you to share some of that cost. I think if we just said, hey, we want, and we want whatever X from you, they're gonna be like, but we didn't get to participate. Right. Not scope for our particular meeting. And I think it could be off putting if we don't have a conversation with them. And then, you know, we can certainly do that, but I think we'd have to assume at some point if we're gonna continue giving back to scope of work, that maybe we know that we're hoping for a partnership monetarily, but that we don't hold, you know, the scope of work until we get a commitment or not. Because I think we have to reach out to their board. We probably have to present it potentially to their board. Because I think that if 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 the tables were turned, council would be like, hey, we didn't get to take a look at that. You know, so can you walk us through it and explain it?
Part of the conversation.
Councilmember Lingle, did you?
I I guess I can keep, when I think about putting money on the table as, you know, skin in the game. I guess I look at this, they're they really, I I get a little confused. Is are we talking about skin in the game for the big pro, big project, the big survey, the big, all of this? Or are we asking them to share the cost of this one on one type conversation? I think those are very different things.
And I was going for the former rather than sort of the latter because I would suspect there'd be one of many at the table for sort of the second part of the conversation.
Yeah, so you know, in my mind, it makes, first of all, I part of why I pass that out is so that, and I do think it's important to kind of go back and look at that old council history uh, from 2019 is is that I really think that there's at least some folks involved in in DFA that believe that we have not done enough, that that's their narrative.
We. The city.
That that, yes, the city has not done enough. And that's why I handed this out. Because this is, we have had a number, this this was 19. How many more years are we now? That we, staff is still investing and still investing and still investing. And so I really think that the the arts discussion has to move on. Yes, this piece has to get solved. I have no problem asking that we put $1,000 on the table to help to share and share like in this discussion. Absolutely not. And it's not, it's not even, wouldn't be insulting to them. They have $100,000 in cash according to their tax returns for years and years and years. They have money. So one would think that if they want to have a special conversation with the city, just like a a developer comes in and pays the fees, that they would share, share in, share out.
You want to.
$1,000? $100,000, they have $100,000 according to their tax return.
Well, since we have a few minutes, but we need to probably wrap this item up. I want to make sure you guys have enough from us to move on. But I'm curious on this particular item, if a good next step in that regard, since I'm hearing some mixed things, but some in unison as well, is it to reach out and have a conversation and see what their thoughts are on a smaller, more executive to executive type meeting versus are they willing to share costs? Or, you know, in having a slightly bigger meeting as a, both as standalone, one or the other, and see how they feel? I'm like, maybe that's a good approach to give some options just in terms of cost difference. I don't know. What do you think on that, Director Thomas?
I think we can approach, you know, DFA over the next week to see if we can get a meeting. The council likely wants to make a board meeting and have probably we come to it and and have a discussion and possibly we tell them as well. I don't know that that's gonna happen in the next two weeks, honestly. So what I'd like to do or I'd recommend is kind of clean up the scope of work based on what we said. Still have that in there, but also paralleling and having that discussion with DFA and then coming back to council and saying, you know, here's the discussion we had. And here is their response to that.
Proceed with the executive session, Director Zoa, to the same.
No, there's no executive. So so go, I'm sorry. So clean up the scope of work based on this evening's discussion. Also, schedule time with DFA. They have a board meeting once a month. I don't know if they convene, they just had it Tuesday before last. Seeing if we can get on their agenda for this. Tuesday before last, seeing if we can get on their agenda for a discussion or seeing if Tony wants to have that discussion, just, you know, with. You know, with us. And then he can make the decision or teams to go to the board. And then if we have to go to the board, then present the scope of work. And then bring back. Hopefully a result that satisfies everybody. Um, and then I would. The only things I don't want, like, I don't know what the time and this is gonna take, so I want to clean up and go get that right. We'll go back and work with the timeline. You know, I'll work kind of internally with the mayor, plus I'll probably also make contact with Castle Department, who does a lot of arts. Within the community, she'll have a good gauge, you know, also of when the wind-up season is. And then also us thinking about what those early tasks are and try and just vet it out just a little bit more. But it is a big commitment by the city. I would say that the city has been, you know, for a long time, maybe committed to arts. They have a cultural commission that invests in their budget and resources and dollars and staffing capacity and staffing as well. So those are things that we would be, you know, looking at as well. Probably gonna continue that type of programming and commitment long-term.
So just to clarify, the cleaning up scope, um, scheduling time at DFA. Uh, you're, and then presenting to DFA, you're talking about the scope for the small standalone subset of that. Meanwhile, the rest of the scope will be cleaned up and moved back onto your action item?
Yeah, I would, I would bring it back for national.
Okay. Assu- assuming that, I, I mean, I can take all of the timing out. It was just given to be able to have a snapshot or what would it take? How quickly could we do it? But if urgency isn't there and if better timing for the community and for everyone involved, it's like Laura said, this could take a year. Hope it's not eighteen months, but you know. Okay, I will work on, on that with you. Um, and I think that the, the issues that we heard, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I can't see your.
Councilmember Mercer.
Mercer, I think, uh, recapped when he came back in the room, exactly what I had heard from the group.
Yeah.
So, open to the public, small, poor group. Anyone else who wants to attend can attend. Um, and, um, we'll separate out this one piece. We'll get back in time. My guess is that they well want to meet with me. I, I, I wouldn't want to just, I wouldn't want to not meet with a consultant doing the work. So, okay. Great. Sounds good.
Thank you so much, Tammy. Have a good night. All right. So our next item is a community development department staffing with Director Thomas.
I'm just gonna share the screen. But. I am going to see if it works or not there, just as a test, but just checking. I have that one message that keeps going.
Hurry.
So again, good evening, Mayor and Council, and there's not, I don't believe there's anybody in the audience today. Uh, so I prepared a presentation that, that will talk about community development staffing. And some changes that we're looking at quite a bit has happened within the department, even just in the last week. So I had to put this together, uh, the last couple of days. So this is currently what we look like within community development, and obviously that is both planning and building. So in the planning department, we have a senior planner that's at one FTE, and then we have. A permit specialist slash assistant planner that's both within building and planning. And is split at point five for each of the departments. And then under the building department, we have the building official, and that's a full FTE. And that position obviously does everything from plan review to inspections to management of the building department. And then we have a permit specialist that has been there for a year. And then, sorry, not a year. It's a one, an FTE. She's actually, they went this for over twenty years. And then we have our building inspector as well that's at one point FTE, but that position is actually split at eighty percent. Inspections and twenty percent plan review. And that was a promotion that was budgeted for, um, this year. So this is just kind of a diagram of community development and the different services that we provide. And so you'll see that we have community development projects, maps and publications. That's a lot of what we do. And then when you look at the building department, they have building permits. They are in charge of updating, managing, um. Title ten, so those are your building codes, um, which are health, life and safety-based. Um, the building department's also the key and in charge of code enforcement. They also have communications, obviously, because we have, uh. You know, it's not just development community, it's our entire community, whether it's our businesses, our, you know, standard homeowner, our HOA. Or if it's a builder, or if it is an engineer or a site designer. So there's a lot of communication that happens. And then they're also, um. In charge of records and management for every department and. Making sure that we meet, you know, any kind of means, we meet Open Public Meetings Act for our meetings. But also for public records, um, retention as well and knowing what that looks like. In the planning department, we have public hearings, meetings and notices, land use applications. We have planning commission, we have comprehensive planning. We have the zoning code, also known as our development standards. And to shore the master program, our watershed program. We also manage our hearing examiner, we're on regional, um, committees. And we're also responsible for records management and code enforcement. And then I oversee the, the entire department. Yes. Oh, thank you, Steve. So yes, and we do manage an abundant amount of consultants, because there are a lot of specialties that we don't have internally. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Steve, on that. So I want to talk about just a little bit about what changes that you're gonna see coming forward. One of them is this evening that we had been previously working on. So currently, our assistant planner slash permit specialist is a two-year, twenty, uh, by a man position. So we call that limited term employment. Essentially, we'd like to make that a permanent position. Um, we'd like to create a new position for three years to get us through our comprehensive planning process and our policy update. We have an existing planner position that, um, will be going from a full FTE to point five FTE remote. At least that's a request at this time. We'll talk about that in a couple of slides. And then we would look at replacing the senior planner with an associate. And then we would honestly forego having a planning intern because we can only manage so many new people. So there would be some cost savings for that. And that's the equivalent of about a point two FTE as far as the budget goes. Um, the assistant planner, so in this part of this information is in the packet this evening. This is the one that we're requesting. For review this evening. Because the position is an LTE, we're now at a stage. Where we might lose continuity of operations and consistency within the department. Because when somebody or an employee knows that their position is going to end at the end of the year. They're gonna start looking mid-year and probably take off at some point fairly soon after that, right? So we are like, okay, what do we do? We still have, you know, tremendous backlog of work. And so we did, actually, uh, Director Mason did a financial five-year forecast. I would note, and it's noted in staff briefing, that that assumes essentially the existing salary schedule, not. And no promotions, but it's likely that we would bring that person in from assistant to associate. And then council still needs to make further decisions on any sort of salary changes long-term for all of our positions. Um, over to the right, you'll just see. You know, that we essentially have six, uh, staff currently in community development. And so this doesn't change it. What it does is it changes it long-term. And there is a financial, um, impact to that. And so that is something that we always have to be aware of. Um, we're looking at an adjustment of the senior planner position. Uh, the employee last week has provided early notice and employment change and request. There, um, they've applied to grad school and are looking at moving out of state. And so if that happens, we'll, uh, lose that person at least for a month in transition in August. And then once they start school, they would, um, like to work about twenty hours a week. For the city, and that's really to kind of complete different projects and policies that they're working on as well. Um, this position currently manages current development and the planning commission provides policy support when possible, when there's capacity. So we would look at moving the position from a full FTE to a point five. And then what we would do is we would. Add a new position that would be an associate position, and that would be at a one-point O FTE. This would increase our capacity, um, by about one and a half. But it's really only an increase of about point five long-term, because. The planning manager that we'll talk about in a minute is a temporary position. Um, and then what we would do is by allowing the existing senior planner position to work at point five. We would, uh, reassess that yearly. Is it still in need? Are we still, you know, do we still need that capacity at that point five? Um, temporary planning manager, this would be a three-year position. This position would manage long-range planning work under the direction of the community development director. Um, they would manage the planning commission and they would occasionally provide current development backup for vacations or if somebody is out. But their primary job would be long-range planning, and this would increase our capacity temporarily for those three years by one full FTE. Why are we doing this? That's always should be the question, right? Um, current development is struggling to meet deadlines, you know, when you, when, you know, we, we submit a report to the mayor, you know, every year. And we've definitely been showing over the last couple of years that we have a capacity issue. And, you know, the market hasn't really adjusted yet, and so we still are seeing a ton of inspections, permits and amendments to the permits. And that's a challenge too. There's just, even for the development community. They're making changes in the field as well, sometimes because of supply chain issues or sometimes because of site, a site issue. So we do see a lot of changes. Um, long-range planning has really been put to the side. You know, I, I put for three years, but the reality, let's face it, it's been since the recession. And we did the comp plan update. Um, you know, two thousand fifteen, but we didn't go back and rewrite our development regulations to match that. But definitely the last three years have been where we completely put work to the side. We have a twenty twenty-four comp plan work. This should begin this year. We should be scoping, doing RFP and contracting. Why should we be doing that now? Because there is a lack of capacity within the consultant field. Um, we're also actively working on housing needs assessment action plan right now. We still need to complete the shoreline master plan. We're really at the place now where we've gotten, you know, we've had final comments from DOE. And we need to go through the planning commission and council, do a workshop refresher, and then get back through hearing. Um, we have a partial development space plan that we've talked about a little bit over the years that needs to be updated. And now we really do need to update it because we need it updated to qualify for certain grants. And then we have a lot of other policy work that's in process. It's been set aside. My land use committee, you know, honestly, what they hear from me is, no, not now. No, not now. We just don't have the capacity, but it's time that we need to start working on some of this, uh, stuff. Again, consultant capacity, you know, we issued our, um, RFP. Then we got statement, statement for qualifications. We didn't even get some in some of the planning field. So we're gonna have to come back, probably extend some contracts within planning services and go back out. And then maybe just pound the door. I was, I was a little surprised that we had such a low. A low turnout of interest. So again, you know, while this is a one-point-five, uh, planning capacity add. Once that position, the three-year one goes away, it would be essentially a point five. I can't say what, you know, is gonna happen. I don't have a crystal ball. So the one thing I always say is, you know, we hire positions and when we have downturn, downturns, our job as directors, as a mayor, when it's administrator. You have to do reductions of course, likely. Or if you have money that's set aside in a rating day and you try to hold on, because it doesn't mean that work necessarily goes away. Long-range planning is still a mandate. It's always gonna be out there. And you're still gonna have some building in current, in current development that you're gonna be going through. I know this is probably a lot to absorb. I've been talking about it a little bit with the land use committee. But I did share them kind of the big surprise of potentially a larger staffing change within the department. I also see it as opportunity as well, right? You get new staffing in and you have new fresh ideas. But I will tell you, it takes a lot. It takes about two years to train. Planning to kind of do their job. Uh, our assistant planner's doing a fabulous job. She's like almost a year and a half in. And we're, we're almost at the end of her training. So that's eighteen months. And so it really does take about two years. Do you have, are here actually, let me get out of this so that, um. So that we have, because we have a council member that's on your screen. That she's not forgotten. And I'll go back and stand up there and take questions.
But Councilmember Mercer?
You, you sort of addressed the, the question that came to top of mind initially is, is both sort of the. You, you sort of led with the retention and stability piece. I think, I think, and I see in my own job day to day, the. The loss of productivity around that ramp time. I know the other factors, obviously, um. Just in general, the, the dynamic shift, the, the country's gone through in terms of labor availability. So even at some of the higher salary price points, and we had this conversation, obviously, as, as part of our other, some of our other discussions. It's still, still challenging to get in, we're a smaller city, so there's a lot of other factors that go into that. I would read your assumption, you know, assuming you get a qualified applicant that can do the work. Uh, that's coming in with some knowledge, but doesn't know necessarily the mechanics of, of the specific department. That's sort of the average time. It could be higher or lower. You know, based on that, I was just curious and sort of taking that a bit, uh, longer. It's about two years to train. Within that sort of two-year cycle and. And I know we were fortunate with the assistant planner. We got she put on some projects very early on that she sort of. Bit off and, and, and sort of moved forward. What do you see in terms of from a productivity perspective, you know, from zero to a hundred within that learning curve? Because I think that's another factor. It's not just the time it takes to train them, but over that course of period of time, what's their productivity? Because that, you know, I look at the point five and it's point five of, you know, something in terms of that.
I would say that when we hire somebody new, especially somebody that's a little bit greener, that might be just out of college or master's program. You're, you're looking at fifty percent capacity probably for the first six to eight months, and then about eighty percent capacity through about. You know, eight, you know, that eighteen months, about two years there at a hundred percent capacity.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dixon?
So what's, uh, do you guys evaluate instead of converting an FTE, just continuing an LTE?
I'm sorry, see that one more time?
So right now, the, the current employee is, is an LTE. It's a limited term. And. You're talking converting to basically permanent FTE. What's the, do you any kind of cost benefit analysis, right? Of, well, it's just roll to another, to extend the LTE. Continue using them. As an LTE instead of converting the, and committing tax dollars to an FTE. Once you commit.
There's no difference between, honestly, between LTE and FTE, and I think you should probably have, we should probably have that conversation. With our attorney, because no matter what, if there is a change in, uh, economy, doesn't matter if you're an LTE or an FTE. There is less stability when you have an LTE and you don't, you, you're just not gonna recruit the same amount. You recruit at the same level. I don't think that you should be rolling over LTE to LTE, because then that's not really what we should be doing, because the work is there. And so it's not a limited term. And so it's not a limited term position and we should really look at that holistically with council. And I recommend having a conversation with, you know, maybe with our city attorney. Because I think we've been doing it, which is okay. I think if you have something that's truly just a year fill-in gap, like we did with finance at the last meeting, that's truly an LTE. It's, it's, it's filling a hole versus we're filling a hole that was created.
So if I interrupt, what I hear you saying is that we've been doing it wrong.
In my opinion, yes.
Mayor, go ahead. And just for a point of history, for those that weren't here when this position came about, is that we originally wanted it to be a full-time employee. But there was concern that there wouldn't be enough work long-term for the individual. And so in order to get the position, we were happy to accept an LTE because the department needed the work so much. So to your point on LTEs, LTEs really should only be used for six months to a year, two years max. And if there's still work, they should be converted to an FTE. In this case, because that work has come along and you could, could see that coming ahead of time. Well, we were very fortunate to get a good candidate. We got very lucky. And we're super fortunate that we were able to get somebody good into an LTE position for this type of work in this environment. And if we'd gone FTE to start with, we may even have somebody better in place today. I mean, this person is fantastic. So that, that's filled this role. So I'm, I'm just putting that out there as an example of, it could have changed the dynamic and who was willing to apply for the job. And so that's another component is that while LTE positions are great, oftentimes when you look at government agencies, those LTEs are often end up special duty assignments within larger government agencies where someone switches departments for a while, gets a change for six months or a year and goes back to their original position. And then typically what happens is after that time, those departments, if it's ongoing work, they create the full-time position and fill those full-time positions. So in a larger agency, it's easier to do the TLTs or LTEs depending on how you couch it. But in a situation like ours, we also have to think about long-term the amount of time and effort, for example, it took just to do this presentation and the agenda bills and come together with a plan to convert an LTE to an FTE. So there's not only the, the uncertainty for that LTE employee, there's also an actual cost to the taxpayers by having to redo this process again. So just share that for perspective. And it's not a bad thing. It's just, it's just the information sake.
Say that starting out with an LTE, LTE is okay. It's just should never be used as a long-term solution. And an LTE is treated the same way essentially. They are still a city employee. They still get benefits. So they are pretty similar. But it is limited.
Did you have a, was that your follow-up then or? Okay, council member legal.
I, I think it's important to convert this position to a full-time. You, you've given us, well, first of all, again, look again at, if you haven't had a chance, read the department report, what's happening in the pipeline. And it's, we, we're just going to have work to do for a while. And it's going to be very important that we do our comprehensive plan in a very, very high-quality way. So that's going to take a lot of energy. Not that it wasn't before, but I mean, the stakes are a lot higher right now because of the growth pressures. So I think it should go to a, a permanent position. I do want to add one that respectfully, Mayor. The reason, what I remember, the reason why we hired that position as a limited term was it was right at the beginning of COVID and we really didn't know yet what was going to come, happen with our tax revenue. So yes, you know, there's the other factors you've mentioned, but that's what I remember as being a, a big factor on why we've been doing limited term employees. Not sure about the economic horizon.
Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I think there's a lot of really great reasons to convert this to a full-time and I, I am in support of doing that. But there's one question that I feel like we aren't asking and it's can we afford it? And I, I think that's an important question. You can't just look at what you need and what you want and you have to figure out where are you going to get the money to pay for it? And I think that is the other reason why the position was an LTE is that we don't know how to pay for this position potentially long-term when this peak of growth that's bringing in tremendous revenue. I was just looking at the plan check fee and zoning subdivision development fees and two bienniums ago, it was three hundred thousand. The one before it was a half a million. The last one, it was a million. And I don't know what it is this one, but, because I, I don't have their most recent reports, but we're seeing this huge ramp up in revenue that is what's allowing us to hire additional employees and do a lot of expansion. And at some point, we're going to need to figure out how we can afford all of this when that monster amount of revenue is not coming in. And it's cyclical. It's going to happen. So I, I think for right now, we can afford it. We have enough work coming in and we have the revenue coming in. But I'm, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, we have a sewer moratorium. There's going to be at some point less revenue coming in because of that. I, I don't know if that's something that the director wants to speak at at the, you know, what we're looking at with revenue for, for planning revenue. We obviously have a ton of permit revenue coming in though. We have a lot of projects that still need to be built out. So I want to say right now, I think we have enough money to pay for this position. But why I think there has been a question about some of these positions in the development department being LTEs is we don't know how long we can guarantee this position, just in general. And I think that's the nature of, you know, a, a planning and, you know, building department, there's those kind of, you know, cycles go through and, and anyway, I'm in support of the position being converted. I, I do think that we are going to need to watch this carefully, just, and not just this position, but all the positions we're talking about. A lot of times we spend most of our time on do we need it? And maybe even how much it costs. But that outside of what we can afford, there, that conversation needs to happen too. And I, I don't know exactly how all this fits into our budget of what we can afford. We don't have any five-year forecasting. You know, our budget runs through the end of this year. That's all we know. And so I, I, I think that is my struggle. Not saying we shouldn't do it, but these are really, it's just an important question to ask that I don't feel like is answered.
We're running a little short on time. I just want to, can I hit council member Schaefer and then we finish up? And then if you have time to address, I know our last item, we can easily move to probably the administrative report. So go ahead, council member Schaefer.
Thank you. Yeah. To council member Naplin's point, we are in a gorgeous world right now. That won't last for, you know, things happen, the economy happens, things internally in the city can happen that will, that will change that. But that's where we are right now and we do need, we do need the help. The concern that the council member Naplin brought up is how can we afford this personal? We can't afford because revenues coming in. When those revenues aren't coming in anymore, I know it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a hard decision to make, but the reality is we size our staff accordingly. And if necessary, we let people go. I've been through that painful process many times in my career, but that's just the reality of the situation. If you don't have the revenue to support the staff you have, you have to respond to that one way or another. So if this turns out to be a, you know, a long-term permanent position that we have for the next twenty years, great. If not, if you can afford it, then we can go to see.
Any other council members want to chime in on this? Uh, council member Isaacson.
Some of our questions and the questions that customer Naplin and customer Schaefer asked, that's, that's kind of just my question. Okay, why do we go to an FTE versus LTE? Because we have the funding now, but what about the future? We don't know. We need to. What I heard you summarize and the mayor summarized was that we kind of tiptoed into this knowing we really needed an FTE, but we were going to be careful. So we were respectful of taxpayer dollars and we stepped in with an LTE process. We proved ourselves, we need FTE. But assuming the ability to pull back from it, and that's where I'm on board with like, we really think there's an investment now that's going to be at least medium term, we call it, knowing that we may not know the future because we can't live that for so long. And I'm on board too. I just wanted to understand a little history. Because I, I don't like you dragging the LTE on either, but I don't want to commit to an FTE.
I, I would say that in two thousand eight, when we had the downturn in Congress, our planning department was confined. We had to make those cuts. And we had essentially three planners, a director and an economic development manager. And we had to make really hard decisions and cuts. That's what we do. That's what our job is. And that's what we're prepared to do all along. The challenge that we have now is we just have this really weird point in the economy, but we don't know what's going to happen next year. So we have to prepare as we go through the budget and as we go through this next biennium that maybe we will have to. But I would also say, long-range planning is an investment in this community and we have not extended that long-range planning dollars. And so we all need to figure out how to weigh those dollars and, you know, an amount every year so that when we hit the shoreline master program, we hit the comp plan, that you're not laying off everybody.
Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify. Every decision that comes forward to this council, especially when it comes to staffing, the short and the long-term impact are evaluated. We have an absolutely fantastic finance director. So just want to remind the group that the city, it's not just development revenue. It is the revenue of increased population and a growing economy and increasing housing prices, et cetera, that have stabilized our revenues in a level that we've never seen at the city. So growth will stop at Sunday. However, over the last four years, we have also fully funded our contingency to the statutory amount. Our reserves are fully funded. We have changed how we plan for our equipment and are putting money in every year to make sure that we never have to do huge expenses for known equipment replacements. We've created of those special projects funds out of our general fund and we have millions of dollars in fund balance plus ARPA dollars. What we have right now that is more concerning to me as the chief executive and a servant of our community is not having the staffing resources to do the necessary work. And that more than anything else, we are here to provide a service to the community and to provide long-range planning is a key of that. And planning also has statutory responsibilities that they're having a difficult time keeping up on right now. So case in point, Parks Trails and Open Space Plan was budgeted five years ago. We have not had the staffing capacity to move that forward and now we're behind. So these are the consequences of not making sure that we have the appropriate staffing levels to do the work at hand. And right now, it's critically important that we catch up so that when we hit that downturn, we're not falling farther behind and falling further behind on our obligations to the state, the federal government and our community.
And one last thing I'll say, I know we have to stop, but just so you know, for long-range planning, we're, we're looking at, you know, whether it's an LTE or an FTE, honestly, I'm just trying to get lobbies in the door. We're only really, you know, we're not, I don't believe we're asking for a lot. We're asking for support during this planning process for long-range planning. But I think it's going to take us five plus years to right-size our policy shift. Because when you look at other cities, whether they're our size or larger, they usually do one or two planning-type projects a year. So they'll do an SMP in a critical area, right? Or they'll do comp plan. Like you, there's no way that even if we hire up, that we're going to have the capacity to dig ourselves out, likely within a five-year period. Because you, you really can't just do everything in a one or even two or three-year process. But if we can get through our backlog and get our comp plan done and get one year of, you know, development regulation updates, then we'll be okay. But one thing I need to share too is, you know, even by adding, you know, a, a point five or a one, we still use consultants for a lot of planning work. And so, you know, we'll be scoping that out. And you couldn't expect to spend potentially a half million plus in this next biennium just on planning. And that doesn't include a Parks Trails Open Space Plan or Transportation Planner element update. And those are two items that need to be done as well. Planning is really expensive. We're going to get eighty thousand dollars from the state, so that'll help supplement it. But we do, it is just an investment that we have to look, you know, continually look and watch. And I think if we do, if we start to do what the mayor just talked about, which is, you know, we're, you know, having a fully funded contingencies, putting money away, then we should have those dollars and not have to go reach somewhere else or cut somewhere else if you're consistently having a savings account for long-range planning. What happened is we just didn't really have it. When we were in the last recession and we were coming out of it, we had to use the contingency fund for the comp plan, which isn't ideal. You can do it, but you shouldn't have to necessarily use those dollars.
So I think we're going to have to wrap this up. And this will be on the regular council agenda as well for more discussion and the decision. If it's okay, Mayor, we're going to just put the city administrator recruitment process update, maybe under administration update on the council.
Absolutely, that works.
Um, and then of course, always under reports and planning, there's the council planning calendar, which is an amazing thing that our clerk has put together and it just helps you see what's on the agenda or the horizon and future agendas. So with that, we're going to adjourn at six fifty-eight and hopefully you all have a few minutes to use the facilities before seven. Start a few minutes late.
To call the Tuesday, May third, two thousand twenty-two Duvall City Council meeting to order at seven oh six PM. Would you please join me in rise and saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yes, I will. I usually have a list of names in front of me and I don't this time. So I'm just going to do it by looking at your face. Councilmember Isaacson.
Present.
Councilmember Mercer.
Present.
Mayor Protem McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Ling Yung.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Okerlander. And Jennifer, Councilmember Napland. Sorry. And Mayor Okerlander.
Here. We have a quorum. Under additions and corrections to the agenda, please add Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-seven. Authorize the mayor to sign a purchase and sale agreement for parcel one three two six zero six nine two zero zero in King County for potential future roadway realignment and reconstruction. And also Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-eight. Approve Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-eight and authorize the mayor to direct staff to purchase one additional light fan in addition to the one previously approved. And with that, are there any other council additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this evening's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say no.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, you're right. Okay, so it's been a long day. Do we have a second? Sorry about that, guys.
Who was the first?
I was.
She was.
Second.
All right. Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. I'm a little punchy. I'm on twenty-sixth hour, twenty-sixth hour of work in two days here. We have a motion to approve. Well, first of all, actually, we'll, we switch the order up a little bit. Do we have any comments for the audience this evening? Do not have anyone present, or is there anyone online that would like to provide comment?
Please press the raise your hand icon if you would like to speak.
All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to approval of the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So much.
All right, so the mood is second to approve this evening's council agenda, consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to the mayor's report. First of all, I want to thank our city staff and volunteers who put on Earth Day last weekend, we, or weekend before last. And for all those in the community that were able to attend. It's been a relatively busy week, but, or busy two weeks, but there's some big news from Sound Cities Association and Association of Washington Cities. For those that have not yet heard, Deanna Dawson, who has been the executive director of Sound Cities Association for the last ten years, was hired and accepted the position of chief executive officer of the Association of Washington Cities. So she will be transitioning out and start with AWC the week before the annual conference this year. In the meantime, the SCA board, we're looking at staffing and starting to do the work necessary to do national recruitment for the position of executive director. We also had the Sound Cities Association Finance Committee meeting. We're discussing our due structure and whether or not to increase the threshold for certain cities that are over a certain size in order to help stabilize the long-term budget and provide the staffing necessary from SCA to all of the member communities. I did have, I had the opportunity to have coffee with Lake Stevens Mayor Brett Gailey about a week and a half ago. He's actually very interested in some of the projects that we've been doing. And I'll be setting up some meetings for him to tour a couple of projects with our staff. I had the absolute surprise and distinct honor to be invited to the president's healthcare event on Earth Day. So I was able to attend that. It was great to hear from multiple elected officials, including, as well as a mom and daughter from our area on what's going on in healthcare and really hearing directly, just as we did at National League of Cities in DC last month, what's going on at the federal level. Really is pretty incredible how much is getting done and how much we're not hearing about on the mainstream media due to everything else going on. This week we had, or last week, we had the Governor's Pandemic After Action Review Task Course. That meeting was really focused a lot on where the gaps in equity and social justice were, starting to look at areas that could have been potentially handled better in the sense of moving forward to a future pandemic. We know that the state managed very well. However, there's, the after-action review is always that opportunity to find the gaps and find out where processes and procedures can be improved for the next time. This morning, we had the Snoqualmie Valley Mayor's meeting. Representative Bill Ramos from the fifth district, Senator Mullet from the fifth district, and Representative Keith Gainer from the twelfth district attended. For the most part, we just had mayor's updates. But Representative Gainer, who serves on the House Local Government Committee, did let us know that over the interim, they're going to be working on potential changes to GMA and also looking at changes to state procurement policies. So if anyone's interested, subscribe to the Legislative Committee work and you can be informed and pay attention to those meetings. This afternoon, we had the North End Mayor's meeting. It was kind of a light group today. No, no outside guests. And a bunch of our conversation really centered around the challenges in hiring that everyone's having right now. Pretty much everyone has major vacancies and trying to find people to fill them is becoming exceedingly more difficult, as well as exceedingly more expensive. So I don't know if I mentioned at the last meeting, but there are now cities in our valley that are providing not just law enforcement, but others with hiring bonuses and hiring, providing their employees with cash referral bonuses for those that recruit employees to come to their city. So I don't know that we've ever seen a job market as competitive as this one for local government. But yet we're also seeing around the region, people just flat out leaving. For those interested in finding out what's going on in other communities, encourage you to go take a look at the Everett Herald and read an article about what's going on in the city of Edmonds right now. It's food for thought and provides some context as to why some people are choosing to leave government service overall. But also doesn't quite get into some of the core problems that are beyond those reasons. There's definitely been a lot of tipping points for folks. And with that, I think that concludes my report for this evening. Are there any questions? One more plug, the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference registration is open. Mayor Protem is registered. I'm registered. We have the funding if we need to adjust the council budget, so everyone that wants to go can go. We'll do that. But it's going to fill up fast as far as the hotels. So if you're interested in going, please let Sarah know so she can at least book your hotel immediately. Because that's refundable. And hopefully we'll get a group of us down there. There's a lot to learn and a lot of camaraderie built in that environment. Thank you. All right, moving on to King County Fire District forty-five, Chief First Day.
Hi, I'm August. I provided a brief report in your packets. I'll just touch on some of the highlights. By year to date, we're at three hundred and fifty-six calls for response. We're still about the sixty-five percent EMS, thirty-five percent fire. That was our breakdown last year, seemed to be trending in that same direction. During the month of April, we had ninety-five call responses. Of that, seventy-two were in the downtown headquarters area. Twenty were at our Turen Valley Station. As we're projecting now, we're at about three point seven one calls per day. We're anticipating an eleven percent increase by year's end. So last year, we were just over twelve per call. This year, we're going to project about thirteen hundred and fifty, which would be a pretty substantial increase. I think all the things that you all know, influx in population coming out of COVID just are all kind of playing into that. From a wild and fire aspect, we had one member recently deployed to Arizona as an, in an overhead position, which is a incident management position. He helped keep the tunnel fire, which if you saw was about twenty thousand acres. Fire season has started early in, in the south. So we're anticipating that that's going to keep our folks busy and we do send those resources out. Items with the city of Duval, we've had some ongoing discussion with our fire prevention responsibilities and we're just working to continue to build our partnership with you. And we've been preparing for Duval Days. Councilmember Schaefer just asked if we were going to be having the pancake breakfast event. It doesn't seem just kind of coming out of COVID and not having enough time to prepare. That we'll be hosting that this year, but we will have an open house. We're going to do some demonstrations during the day and just invite everybody in to come and see their building, frankly. We met with District, new council member Perrin had a District Three Behavioral Health Discussion that I believe Chief Debak was also in. That was good. It seems to, they want to focus on how they can bring some resources out our way. And I just wanted to say thanks for inviting us to Earth Day. I believe we provided some bicycle helmets and it was just nice to partner with everybody and get those passed out to the community. And we'll also have those for those who didn't get them at Earth Day at the Duval Days, so they'll still be available. And if anybody has any questions?
Yes, so you say eleven percent increase.
Yep.
Projected by the end of the year. How's that compared to prior COVID? Is that on par or increases above that?
So I think it's hard to actually gauge what the true trajectory is because we're seeing a population do.
Right, because I'm trying to differentiate between.
I will give you some numbers. Unfortunately, I've only been here eleven months, so I don't have all that data just yet, but.
I'm curious when your staffing prior to COVID versus.
So our staffing has actually increased. In two thousand twenty, we had fourteen career, no, we had seventeen career members and now we're up to twenty-four. So we have the capacity to handle the call volume. The second station definitely helps. It's keeping our units available in the district more. So I don't anticipate it being a short-term problem. But if, you know, population growth continues, we'll be, we'll be comfortable for that and be able to respond accordingly. We're in a good spot right now. Anything else? All right, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Moving on, we do not have a report from the Duval Police Department this evening, so we'll move to council committee reports. First up is finance and administration.
Oh, well, I guess I could just say we're still working on the procurement policy. We have a regularly scheduled procurement, or sorry, finance and administration committee meeting this Thursday. But yeah, we're getting close. We were just talking about that. I mean, I think we're really getting close to the end of procurement or at least getting it to a point and bringing it back to the whole council. So, yeah, that's it.
Excellent, thank you. Land use, Councilmember Hoag.
Thank you. So we did have a meeting on April twentieth and we spent most of the meeting talking with Troy Davis about the comp plan amendments that he's been working on. And it's a huge lift, but it's really important work that's being done. We do have another meeting tomorrow. And on the agenda, we'll be talking about permit processing, comp plan amendments again, and an open-up update. Nine thirty.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Hoag? Seeing none, we'll move on to public safety.
Let's see, we did not have a public safety committee meeting this month. We, we decided actually to forego it. But we did do some additional interviews, police candidate, police officer candidate lateral interviews. I had some excellent candidates there. And I'm sure Police Chief will have an update for us next, next time. Also, police clerical interviews. And again, excellent candidates there. So I'm very optimistic about getting a, you know, a clerk on board. And I'm very optimistic about getting at least, you know, one additional officer on board too, which will still leave us, by the way, with either one or two opening officer openings. So we're not, we're not completely staffed yet, but we're, we're making progress.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember. Any questions? Great. Moving on to Public Works Committee.
I'm not on that anymore, so I don't know who the chair is. Everyone's looking at me.
So Public Works Committee. Can you help me out? We meet next week.
There you go.
All right. And then do we have any updates from the ad hoc committees this evening? Councilmember Hoag?
So we do have a procedures and code of conduct meeting next Monday, the night at twelve thirty.
Great, excellent. And then any council members have anything that they would like to speak to this, Mayor Protem McKent?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you all know, I went to, I think it was last week, I went to the Encompass Inspire Breakfast. Really great to learn more about their program and just nice again to have some normalcy and be in person and go to things like that again. Earth Day was amazing. I'll echo what the mayor said. I got to stop by with one of my sons and he made, let's see, Melanie helped him make a little terrarium. I'm trying to remember, oh yeah, Gavin was at a booth thing that had all sorts of fun little things. Pencils and like dog poo bag container thing and which my son was just thrilled with. And it was just a great event and it just, you could tell everyone really enjoyed it, so just so well done. Coming up, I think you should all have a calendar invite on Friday, May twentieth at Grateful Bread will be an in-person council chat. And then, yeah, just wanted to, you know, say what the mayor said, basically, is I'm attending the AWC Conference at the end of June. And I'd really recommend getting, I haven't gone to one before, so I'm gonna go now, but just after NLC, I was so amped up and like looking forward to getting in person again and meeting other people from other cities, so encourage you all to go.
All right, thank you. Any other council members? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the City Administration Report and Ms. Thomas.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. As usual, this is a group effort, so I really appreciate it. And I learned a lot about what's going on in our other departments. And Steve helped me kind of do a refresh of what it looks like, so thank you, Steve. I like that photo better. Oops, I went too fast. So this is just a department administration update. I'm gonna add this to the administrative recruitment now, since we moved it from the COW. So good news is we're continuing to progress forward. We did issue an email out to recruiters that are within Washington, Oregon, and one from California and then another one from out of state, so for a total of seven. And this Friday is the deadline for them to provide us essentially information back that would provide us the ability to choose a recruiter. And so essentially, statement of qualifications, as of today, we've received two. There is an internal director committee and then the mayor and the mayor pro tem are also on that committee. So Monday, we will have a meeting where they, we all have to go in and look at them over the weekend and rank them and be prepared either to say somebody is a clear, you know, a clear candidate. And we'll start a contract process or we might do an interview or maybe say we're not interested in any of them and go back out. I can tell you in general, what I am meaning is that it's gonna be a matter of a form of process for the recruitment, which doesn't surprise me, that's, that's pretty typical. Are there any questions on that in particular?
Not a question, just the, I guess, a a statement or perhaps a desire, but I think it's very important. I know we're doing this. I just think it's very important that we have the directors interview the candidates. And have, you know, have them weigh in on the candidates. I think that will go a long ways as far as getting the candidate in that works well with, with directors. And frankly, also with the, with the council.
Councilmember Hoag.
So I'm in agreement with what Councilmember Schaefer just said, but I also wonder if we couldn't have a community input. I don't know how that works, but. That's, that is in our scope, that's out to our recruitment. So, yeah, our anticipation is having three layers of interviews. A director level, an executive level, which would be executive would be council and executive. And then also having the executive mayor pro tem meet with some of our broader representation with him. You know, whether it's the business committee, the fire district or fire chief, he's already gone, so maybe somebody from MOP. So we'll, we'll figure that out. And my guess is you might also do a meet and greet, you know, if you have an open house as well. So, yeah, a way probably more robust than we've done before. But I think it can be worth it in the end to get the right candidate. We have one remaining Planning Commission seat available tonight. We have, or actually, we did the appointment through consent. So we're really excited. That'll put us up at six, so thank you to everybody whoever got that person to actually apply. And we actually have one more application, so I'm happy about that. Cultural Commission had its second meeting. They will be meeting regularly twice a month. Cass has continued to help us stack that, so the last two meetings, we went through policy procedures, roles, responsibilities. And so I would anticipate the next meeting talking about maybe what the committee, or the commission would like to do. Cause they do have some funding and have maybe one or two items that they could kick off for this year, so they can start to get their feet under them. Public Works remodel, the consultant provided primary draft design for review internally to staff that's going to be in that building. So that was a really good exercise and then Public Works met with the consultant to share kind of what our comments were on that. The good news is we can probably all fit in there and it's gonna be a very new, I guess, look, which is more modern. Which is some of our stations are gonna be mobile, right? You know, where you can have people go in and out of them and we'll have less fixed rooms, offices. So that's very different, I think, for most of us, but we're excited to move into the next century, so stay tuned on that. Council Committee, so this is really a question and we don't have to answer it this evening, but I want to bring it to your attention. We have, we probably should backfill our committees where Councilmember Lingo was on them just to make sure we have a quorum and just for consistency, cause it's gonna take a little bit of, you know, it's gonna take a while to get the recruitment. So the mayor pro tem will probably reach out to council members. It's the Public Works and FAC that need, that need a warm body, so if you're interested, please let Councilmember know, and we'll, remember Pro Tem knows, and we'll, we'll try it back though. The next one, FAC will be asked to consider an ordinance that provides a policy for utility shut-offs for units when on a fire suppression system. And what I mean by that is we're either gonna shut them off or not shut them off and we need to have a policy to go either way. I think we had about nineteen shut-offs this week and one of them was not shut off because it was part of a fire suppression, you know, that had fire suppression in it. So stay tuned, FAC will be looking at that and we'll bring that forward to council, probably here in the next couple of meetings. As you are probably aware, on June first, OPMA PRA Emergency Proclamation will expire. So I'm assuming we're all really excited about that. But with that, it leads to another question, which you don't have to answer tonight, but just to think about. Our meetings are going back into hybrids, so Planning Commissions had their first meeting, you've had your second meeting. We have council committees as well. We don't, we're not bound by OPMA, there is, we don't take public testimony, we don't make decisions. But council, if they wanted, we could host it in a building, not today, cause we don't have a building ready yet. But we will, you know, we will as soon as we can. We're just waiting for some additional IT support. And get it, get it a little bit better cleaned up, so that's something that maybe each committee think about. And then get back to the mayor pro tem again. I think at this point, we probably recommend just waiting a little bit, getting kind of our feedback under the ground. Because if you do decide to do it in person, it means you should probably, you know, they'll want to show up to it as well. And there's flexibility within people's work schedules to do them remotely, so just some food for thought for you to think about. At a future COW meeting, we will bring forward additional ARPA expenditures, mostly like one-time expenses. So we're just gonna continue, you know, to do that throughout the year, so it's just a gentle reminder. So now it's just a department update, Council Computer Need Survey is coming soon. So I, we can see that everybody has different devices, they're at different ages, they're not, you know, they're not functioning optimally. So we wanna get, we wanna get something that's gonna work for council. COVID test distribution event is this Friday outside of City Hall from nine to five. We'll have two tests per, per person, so if you need anything, come on down. And we've pushed that, pushed that out through social media, so I, hopefully, we got some good feedback on social media already. Land use committee this week will discuss the permit processing and comp plan policy change and community development staffing. We had a first successful in-person Planning Commission meeting last week. It was amazing to be with everybody after a couple of years. So that was nice. We're doing yearly building inspections. And I'm not talking about building inspections for me, it's, I'm talking about like our commercial and industrial buildings that have not been inspected in some cases for two to three years. And so we're finishing, actually starting and finishing one kind of building at a time. Cause what we have found is that, you know, in some cases, you know, you'll have somebody that put in a tenant improvement without a permit. So we have to go through and try to get everything right side and make sure it meets your health, life and safety standards. But so far, all the building owners have been really good to work with and we've been doing a lot of handholding, which is what we do. Public Works crew has been deep cleaning sidewalks on Main Street, so hopefully you've noticed that. It's something that I always think they do, kind of like going into what I call the community event season, so like dual days. So I saw them like scraping out all the weeds out of sidewalks, I think it was yesterday or today. So kudos to them, that is not an easy job. Sidewalk repair citywide will occur tomorrow. Staff have been prepping and preparing areas. On-call consultant review is in process. We have an internal meeting, as I shared with you, at least from a planning perspective. We didn't have a strong, a real strong showing, so that, that could lead to having to go back out for some items. Public Works is recruiting an intern and it's not going great. Okay, Steve, I just missed all that. It's not going great. Big news, oh my gosh, Steve, you announced it, the P E.
So yes, it is tempered but exciting news. Good for Larissa, she has passed her. However, the nuances of our code have come to find less, I guess, joy in pay scale promotion than you would expect, so we're working on that. I think committee will see it this week, yeah, but it's good. She's happy to be done and she can have a baby next month and that's great.
It is a huge lift, a huge accomplishment, because this employee works full-time, has toddlers, a teenager. And it's a lot, there's a lot of work and it's, it's hard work, so we were, we're super excited. So Police Department update, watercraft training is scheduled for the first week of June with deployment of the program at the end of the month. So you'll get to see them being towed by our side-by-side in the parade and get everybody excited. Sergeant positions and background check and Councilmember Schaefer talked about that a little bit. And the clerk applicants will be meeting with the chief. There are five that made it through to the, what we call the chief round. So that's great news. IT storage, a storage switch was deployed, don't ask me what that really means, but it's been deployed. Preparing surplus list for obsolete hardware, obsoleted hardware, okay, that's good. Troubleshooting phone issues, we have got phone issues that have never gone away, so eventually we can help it away. IT improvements at the rec center, so we have a transition of public work staff obviously to our beautiful building next door. Needed some IT work, which, you know, like internet, just some other infrastructure needs. Finance, they posted the LTE position. Applicants are not, so between Steve and Dana, we are definitely struggling. Honestly, even the internship recruitment for finance, they've only had one person follow directions.
And hence this highlights my report.
So, are there any questions?
Not seeing any questions for Director Thomas, so we'll go ahead and move on to special presentations. Just a moment, let me pull up the proclamation. All right, so this is a proclamation for Kids to Parks Days. So whereas, May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two is the Twelve Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust held annually on the third Sunday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension and hypercholesterolemia. And whereas, Kids to Parks Days broadens children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day recognizes the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, Washington, do hereby proclaim, May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two is Kids to Parks Day in the City of Duval. The City of Duval endorses the goals, objectives and purposes of the National Park Trust to Kids Park Day. And with that, we do not have any public hearings and we also do not have any unfinished business. So we'll move on to our total five items of new business. And at the end, just so you know, just to remind folks, we have Councilmember Lingle's last meeting. So I think, I know I would like to share some remarks and I'm sure others will as well. And so we'll have a good of the order at the end today. So moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four, temporarily waiving facility rental and stage use fees and deposits for pandemic recovery. Our clerk has a cold, so she's asked me to lead this one. This is discussion and/or decision. This is simply proposing waiving our facility rental and stage use fees and deposits for this season only. As all of our nonprofits and events come out of COVID, it's a small way to, to support them in their time of reemergence. Nothing more complicated than that, so if council is interested in supporting that, be happy to entertain a motion this evening. If you'd like to have discussion and move it to another meeting, that's okay as well. I just, Mayor Pro Tem?
I had a quick question, so I totally support this, a hundred percent. But I think I just wanted to make sure, is this just for nonprofit groups? And, you know, community event type things and it would not be allowed for like personal crap events? Like, whoo, I wanna stage for my party or something like that.
Honestly, in talking with our city attorney, he advised that we couldn't do it for just one group of people, that we had to do it for everyone. So it would be for private events, non-profit events, any type of use, isn't that correct?
Correct, but for Duval residents.
For Duval residents, yes, I'm sorry.
So a follow-up to that, sorry, I don't, sorry, I have a question. How is that different from like our discounts that we, you know, have a discounted fee for nonprofit groups? Can we do something similar? Is there a different way to structure it, just to make sure this isn't utilized by like just private? I think, cause I think the intent is just for, to help community events, not to help.
Yeah, so we were looking at the definitions that were being used and I can't remember where that definition was that we were looking at it, but.
Fee resolution.
In a fee resolution, yeah, there are some, but not all groups that are covered by that. In my comfort with picking certain community groups over other community groups. So it's not just, it's really hard to narrow a group of quote, community groups, you know what I mean? Because Boys and Girls Club gets it, but Boy Scouts doesn't, or just as an example. And so it's hard to find that line and so obviously, city residents is a way to do it. Rather than just anybody that wants to do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Isaacson and then Councilmember Naplin.
So the estimated revenue loss here includes all of, or just the nonprofits for?
Includes all of them, I got that from Dana.
And to be clear, this is something that ARPA yet funds can be used to backfill as well.
I just want to make sure that this didn't, like Mayor Pro Tem was saying, if it's a nonprofit, but really we're talking more than that. This only encompassed nonprofits, the bill, but this is nonprofits and anyone's systems, it involves all kinds of stores.
Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I, I really like that we're going to get our buildings up and running and you, being used by the community. My concern with this is part of the reason we charge a fee for our rentals isn't, you know, to make revenue, make money off of our community groups or if, it's to really cover, in my opinion, the staff time. Uh, community groups or it, it's to really cover, in my opinion, the staff time and the cost to run the buildings. And so when I look at how much it'll cost to provide these facilities at no charge. It's not just that amount. It's the resources it will take. Um, to keep the buildings open, set up the stage, take down the stage. I, I'm just wondering. Do we have an estimate of how much this will cost, especially if suddenly it spurs a whole bunch more people to be using the facilities or using the stage? That hadn't been because, oh, let's try it. It's free. I, I have no idea if that will happen, but um. I, I do want to keep an eye on how much staff time this takes. Uh, cause that, that in my opinion was part of the reason we charged. Was to create a balance between renting and having some revenue to cover the cost. Clearly it never covers all the cost, but. Is there, is there any type of tracking? I, I think that's something that we've not done, um, maybe as well as. You know, we could and not trying to criticize. It's just, you know, we're growing as an organization and I think that would be information that would be helpful to understand. How much staff time?
Yeah, I, I can't um speak directly to how much time uh Ms. James and Ms. Cam spend on this. However. Um, when you look at, for example, our deposits, um, someone's doing a fifty dollar deposit. I guarantee it costs more than fifty dollars in staff funded. Staff time to refund that deposit. So in this sense, while we won't be taking on um deposits and rentals, we are. Um, there's a negated loss um because of the fact we're not taking on deposits and not taking that money in. So there is administration that goes away simply by doing this for this limited amount of time. Um, and again, some of that can be backfilled and uh the reality is, is that deposit. Um, by the time you get multiple people involved in having to track down. Who that user was, making sure the building's clean, you've run up more than fifty dollars in, in staff time alone in that process. So um. You know, it's your, your point, uh, council member is well taken. Um, at the same time. Um. If we don't have the staffing to keep, provide all the time that folks want at the buildings, then the building won't be open. If we don't have someone to unlock and do the work. That time slot's not going to be available. Um, that's the way we've always operated and will continue to operate. Uh, council member Mercer?
Um, I actually just said I had a follow-up question um to the, on the mayor pretend's comment and it wasn't as, again, I, I think in. In principle, I think it's the right thing to do. I think it makes sense. Um, I think we're, you know, talking about some of the unintended consequences to some extent. I, I was actually more a little less around waiving the, the, the rental fees. It was more just in terms of. For a broader audience, if there was any risk around not having a deposit. I know people in terms of tend to. Take more care, do the due diligence, do the cleanup. I, I think that, you know, could translate into work. A lot of the deposits were very minimal. I think that the biggest one was around the stage potentially, you know, for damage or other things. Uh, if that was also assessed in terms of the risk, if it was more broadly, cause I, I do agree and. I, I'm making some assumptions, but for some of the nonprofit organized groups, they're, they're tend to have a little more um rigor around um. Those processes versus just the broader community. But again, I'm not adverse to, to, to moving forward. I was just asking from a due diligence perspective. If that was at all considered and if there was any additional risk by, from the deposit uh specifically, but.
It, it was discussed internally, but it was also discussed that it can be challenging to recover damages as it stands from folks. So. Looking at what's the most efficient way to administer a program like this uh for a short period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Schaefer?
Uh, we'll see a couple of questions. One is cleaning these uh, uh, how do these fit into the, the, this picture or is the city gonna be responsible for that?
Director Thomas?
So one just clarification and we'll get to, to your question. The, um, the, the, the fee deposit. Fee deposit, which is really kind of to protect the asset is five hundred dollars.
That's for the stage only.
Yeah, that's for the stage only. So we just want to be keeping that. And as far as cleaning our facilities, I believe Steve, currently we still have a cleaning service. That does, you know, that does that, but you know, public worker staff would go in after and then make sure, you know, the lights are on, make sure it's pure, make sure there's nothing. You know, that's happening there.
And, and who pays for the cleaning?
The city does.
The city, okay. Okay, so we're still, we're still paying for the, for the cleaning. The, the other question I have, I guess, is more, more for uh Daniel. Is, is there any way we can keep this specific to nonprofits? I mean, that's really the intent here. Uh, and you know, I, the way it stands, if somebody wants to have, if, if a Duval resident wants to have their uh. Uh, whatever, their, their son or daughter's wedding uh at one of these facilities, they can do that for free uh now. So uh, to me, that part of this doesn't sit well. Um. Can, can you maybe elaborate more on your concern around uh, around that?
Yeah, um, I, I wish there was an easy answer to, to, or easy solution. The, the concern is based on content-based regulation. And so cities can run into that in a, a number of different ways. But if you have a discount for certain groups that can be viewed as picking and choosing. You know, whether that's what they're communicating or who they are as a group. And so somebody that doesn't fall into that bucket, that doesn't get that benefit, um, is being, you know. Detriment, it has a detrimental issue there. So i- i- it's tough. Um. You know, cities can do a number of different things for, you know, for governmental purposes. And that's why there's a number of things that cities do. With funds or relieving, you know, uh obligations, but those are to, to further those purposes. Nonprofits, just as a bucket includes a whole range of things, some of which might fall into those and some of which wouldn't. And so I just don't think we're at a level of specificity to get there, that direction. And we're also too specific to do it basically because of content issue. Um, and so um, I think as the, as the mayor noted, one, I think one solution is, is some of those ARPA funds, right? Um, you don't want to create too much process or administration, but using ARPA funds, whether it's to those applicants. To use it to then get the money kind of as a small grant. But, but there's, the, I mean, I, I want to be mindful, there's a firm amount of process. It's fifteen hundred bucks for the, you know, fees, you know, it may take some time to put that, but. Or to recruit the city for, for that loss. I think that's a way to do it because those funds are specifically earmarked to be used in. Free your fashion and just your average dollar, if you will, city dollar.
Yeah, I, okay, good. No, that, that helps a lot. The, the, the way this stands right now, I find it difficult for me to support it just because. Of the ambiguity, the potential cost to the city, uh. And uh, the fact that it may be abused frankly, uh, and uh, the city will end up uh, you know, paying, paying that cost.
Um, Director Maniszewski, and then we have uh council member Hoag and then uh council member Naplin has her hand up again, but we'll go through everyone in the room before we go around a second.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Council. Steve Maniszewski, Public Works. Uh, this is a heavy topic and I, I would like to lighten it a little. Um, for the record, since I've been back, no one has requested rental on the stage. Okay, so we do use it for summer stage and D F A uses it for sandblast. It sits in the park. If you read the resolution on how you rent the stage, right, this is money, not how. It goes through a process. There's a three-week minimum leave time. It is up to me if it is for the policy, if it does or doesn't go somewhere. It can't just go to your street. Like it, there's not a lot of places in town to use it. It's pretty much like the schools, cause it has to be a site that can receive. A forty-foot trailer opened up to the size of the stage. Um, it is booked pretty much for the summer, so the risk of it moving between. June second for the event or June fourth for Duval Days, it'll be there the week prior. It stays there all summer for summer stage. We move it once to the small side from the big side for sandblast. So it is booked all summer. So I, I guess I, I hear all the thing on fees. I believe me, I know what it takes to move the stage and set it up and break it down. Um. It hasn't happened yet. And I think if it's our partner from the school or maybe fire forty-five to something at the end of the year, I don't know, but it ha- hasn't been rented. And we do reserve the rights, so I can see where you all are in the tenor of the use. And if I'm the one who approves it, then I say no to somebody, they're gonna come and ask you anyway. So. Uh, I guess there is a little bit of a fail-safe. Should we want to reconsider an event that we might want to have it used for free? So I think maybe the stage is a different issue per se than the rest of the fees that are listed on that um rent schedule. So. Hope that helps a little.
But I, I will add on to that, that that was one of the requests for the nonprofits is the, the stage rental. Uh, to have that be provided. So um, if that's just information sake, so council member Hope?
That's kind of the topic I wanted to talk about is the stage, cause I know that it costs a lot of money for staff to go. And if it was for a one-day event, don't they have to spend a lot of overtime to remove to?
If you read the policy, we are the chauffeurs of the physical structure to and from, right?
See it being a very expensive thing for. It just to be rented for anyone, right?
The case in point, the key point to remember is that if we don't have the staffing available, we can't provide that service. So um, you know, if Steve, if our, as public work director, Steve is not issuing, authorizing overtime for these types of things. Then the stage doesn't get booked. Uh, so that's a really important thing to remember as well, is that staffing, a lot of availability of. Our facilities even right now depend on staffing. Uh, so if we don't have the staffing level for that particular request, it's not gonna happen.
And I haven't been aware, made aware of any sort of event that's happened outside of, you know, the regular summer venues in the park.
All right. Um, so we have not heard from council member Lengel or Isaacson? All right, uh, council member Isaacson?
Is there a way to give ourselves a limit? In other words, we had four thousand-ish put in here, right? We're concerned about, okay, the word gets out and it goes and goes, next it is an unlimited. Cost or, I mean, can we come in and say, yes, we're good with this as long as we limit it to eight thousand dollars? I don't know. I mean, that, that would control the city's budget that way. And so you might just have unlimited money. Hopefully what you're saying is it'll never get there. But at least it gives us a stopgap to say, let's just not let it get out of hand and exceed some amount. I mean, it might. Bump you with your return. Council member Schaefer, can you give me some comfort? I don't know. Would you do that?
Uh, Mr. Kenny?
I mean, I, I think you could. I think you'd have to probably do it on a first come, first served and then just use it up as you go.
Right. Just an idea. I'm, I'm not saying that's gonna be a go or no-go for me. I'm just throwing it out there to try to help move forward.
Thank you. Um, council member Naplin?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I, I, I want. Want to clarify what I was talking about. I, I do understand those administrative costs, but the, the larger cost that I was concerned about is the maintenance cost. The cleaning costs, the opening up of the stage, setting it up. Um, those are some pretty big costs versus um, you know. Some accounting, which also takes time, but I, I, I think if you compare how much effort goes into setting up the stage and. The fact that this could potentially be used for private events, I, I, I just, I know we haven't had any requests, but. Um, if word gets out, you can rent the stage or, you know, any of the buildings and we have policies for alcohol use and. Um, you know, deposits for alcohol use in case there's spills on the carpet and um. I, I think those are all there for a reason to protect our assets. And I, I feel really strongly about this, similar to council member Schaefer, that. Protecting our city and, and investments that our residents have made into our facilities is important. And perhaps having in addition, um. To what council member Isaacson said, you know, having some kind of limit on it, cause I would worry. That we could get ourselves into more legal trouble if suddenly one group you had time for and another one you didn't. Is there a pattern? Or we don't have time to do your event, but we have time to do this event. I, I think that could actually become more problematic if we start. Managing who we want to rent it to by just claiming we don't have staff time. I, I think that would get so messy. So.
To clarify that, that happens today and, and has always occurred.
Right, but I think that that um comment came into what if we're having, you know, private citizens wanting this and it's taking time. Um. It, it did seem to be, anyway. I, I won't go into too much detail there about what I was, thought I was hearing, but anyway, um. Yeah, I, I'd really like to offer this, maybe have a discount, but just this complete open-ended. Is, is tough for me. And I even look at the school district, their policy for rentals. They're very specific of categories. And if you're this category or this rate, if you're this category, they're this rate. And I have pored over. So many different school districts and they all have these fee structures that are built based on user group. And it's standard and I, I see it with cities with their rental of their fields. I don't know. I, I'm just, I'm having a hard time comprehending that we're not allowed to do that. And maybe we need to define. That category, not community group use. And we have to be very specific of nonprofit and divine, to define it. More black and white of nonprofit. I, I'm not really sure. I, it's a question for Daniel, but I, I do see that. All over the place that fee structures separate out user groups into nonprofit and, you know, is it? School use, is it? I, I don't know. I, I'm just really puzzled by that answer. Not saying it's not true. I, I just, I'm confused.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kenny, would you, would you like to address that?
Yeah, I mean, I, without having, you know, another policy as an example to, to look at, mo- most of the ones that I can think of would be related to. Um, a user group that advances the purpose of that governmental entity. So for. School district and fields, it's the, it's the users of the fields that might get a preference, preference over a kid's birthday party. You know, or they want to play Frisbee or something. And so, so that's different than what we're talking about here, cause we don't have like a. User group defined by the. Facility that we're talking about or the stage or what have you. Um, you know, for a stage, could you possibly do? Some arts and cultural type focus, probably, because that's. The government interest was designed to do that, but um, again, I think we'd have to get into a level of specificity that might not be. Useful, but we could do.
Mayor Pretend McHenry and then council member Lengel?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I had written down something similar, council member Isaacson, about some kind of cap, because I think we could all get there. With some of the concerns, if we put a cap that would probably be fine, have it be first come, first served basis. I don't know. It's possible to just reach out to past users, I mean, and say, hey, you know, we have this in place. Make sure you get your reservations in or whatever. Um. Anyways, I, I just don't know if that's like an amendment we could make that could get everyone on the same page or to a certain comfort level.
Thank you. Um, clerk, can I fill in?
I was just say, um, the cap, I, I'm just thinking about how that would work administratively, um, tracking that. Might be kind of difficult or take some time, staff time, you know, like, okay, we reached the cap yet or not, you know? Might be a little difficult. All I was just thinking about it.
Thank you. Um, council member Lengel?
Um, uh, Mr. Kenny, I, I think what you're describing is a mutual and offsetting benefit. Might not.
I mean, yes.
That's probably the best way to look at it. Um, and what that would require, that a five oh one C three document that they are, as you said. Providing um a service to, for the betterment of the government, publicism. That's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, and you know, when we looked at the list of the nonprofits that are listed, I mean, it really, there's a wide range with it or community groups and nonprofits. There's a really wide range of groups there. There's also a whole wide range of groups that are not included on that list. That would want to be included on that list. And so that's where you get into trouble.
All right. Well, it doesn't sound like there's consensus on this. Um, so we've got a couple of questions. I'll acknowledge that um with hands, but. But um, since there are lots of ideas floating around, my recommendation would be, um, we're at eight o'clock already. That we um, that folks that have suggestions for amendments, um, send them in by Tuesday. Um, to the clerk, and that we have further discussion and potential action on this at the next meeting. Is there any objection to that? Okay, did Councilmember Schaefer and Councilmember Isaacson, did you want to uh provide your comments still, or did you want to wait?
And just in an effort to maybe try to move forward, if we. I'm not very clear on the process, I've been part of it a few times. So we can have a verbiage, I would propose, and then and then we can vote on it, and if it's made, then we can always do what you're saying here, if it gets approved. And we can move forward and don't have to worry about it coming back to another councilman, I mean, if you just reject it today based on my amendment, fine, we can come back. Who put their inputs in, recusing, we try again, I think, it's just an offer of a solution to move it forward.
Okay. If that's what the group would like to do, you're more than welcome to, so that would take a motion on the table on the agenda bill as presented, and then. Um, need a motion a second, and then and a uh motion and a second for an amendment and discussion and vote.
Okay, so.
And then vote on the underlying uh agenda bill as well.
Yeah, so I'll help with the verbiage. I better just die, I don't want to. Sorry, I can't read it. I'll use plain language. Approval comes first.
You you make the motion on the agenda bill and then get a second, and then it's opportunity for discussion and amendment.
Okay, so. The verbiage. Plain language for me is, I will like to make a motion to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four, as we should have very waving. Facility rental and stage usage fees and deposits for end of recovery.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, so we have a motion and a second, discussion and or amendments.
Okay, so then I would would like to propose an amendment to. Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four, residential temporary waving facility rental and stage usage fees and deposit for potential recovery. From the, whatever the amount is, I think it's forty-five hundred, to be limited to eight or nine thousand. Dollars.
Okay, is there a second on that proposed amendment? Is, I'll ask again, is there a second on the proposed amendment? All right, so with that, then there's discussion on the underlying motion. Um, or there has been a lot of discussion, so you, if you would like to take a vote now, we can, otherwise, Councilmember Schaefer.
What was there a second?
There was not a second.
Oh, okay, okay, so what what are we taking a vote on?
So there's a motion on the floor to approve or reject Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four, and so if it is rejected, we, it has to be completely redone. Um, the the issue is dead, under Robert's rules of order, um, and council, the. The prevailing side would need to move to bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, but my, my, you know, this is sort of saying the same thing I already said, but my. You know, I come to this, wouldn't pass the red face test as we're talking to our constituents, tell them that, yes, you're paying for a private event. A private event that doesn't have anything to do with a nonprofit. To be held at this facility, and I think that does not pass the red face test.
All right, thank you. Great, uh, Councilmembers.
I'm just, it's a more broad comment rather than the voting, I I mean, I I think there are some ways that this could be. Adjusted via the amendment process, I I wasn't comfortable with the specific cap. Based on what that was without some additional analysis, because essentially we were just doubling the amount we'd already allocated, and I don't know that that was the right limit. I do think in terms of my Councilmember Schaefer's comments, I mean, there is that that broader question in terms of. Who the target audience would be, or I guess more broadly, how to manage that or scope it to the intended audience, and and I I would. Personally benefit from additional time to do a little more investigation and research, particularly, you know, around some of the conference meetings, other cities, I think Jennifer made it. Be great to have some examples and look at some language, so that's kind of where I am tonight.
Great, thank you, any other further discussion? Seeing none, the motion um on the floor is to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four. Um, I know this will be complex, so we'll go ahead and ask for a um. Uh, a vote by a council member instead of a, so that we make sure we don't have to go back on division, so Clerk McFellin?
Councilmember Isaacson?
So we're voting on as it.
As it was written, correct.
So, then I vote approve, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember, uh, Rizer?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Lingle?
No.
Councilmember Hope?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Mayor Proton McHenry?
No, right, the motion fails, um.
I didn't vote, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's so lit, but. Say no, so.
All right.
Sorry.
Um, so the motion fails, um, so if council would like this to be brought back up. At the next meeting, um, to rehash it, we'll need a motion to reconsider from the prevailing side. And the council must approve that.
I move we reconsider this issue at the next meeting, I second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in.
So I'm sorry, no, do you have further discussion, sorry, uh, how, so what's gonna change?
So, um, we'll go back to my original recommendation before the motion and the amendment, and that is for council to submit any. Um, recommendations or amendments um to the clerk by Tuesday. Um, so that they can be reviewed and brought back at the following meeting.
Good, thank.
Yep. All right. Oh, Mr. Alonishewski?
May I suggest something?
Yes, you may.
So other things could be embargoed to control those costs. Somebody could consider a motion to maybe let the stage remain fixed in its current state, right, so.
Yep.
You don't need to take it somewhere, maybe somebody rents it and space it's at, maybe they don't, but again, those kinds of things, we don't want to get too crazy with all kinds of rules. All, but, you know, that helps control the atmosphere, then that's certainly an idea that could be batted around.
Um, but for this time, um, so we have a motion and a second for reconsideration at the next meeting. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passes, all right, uh, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-five, twelve, phase three and four. The Ridge at Big Rock Affordable Housing Covenant for Discussion and or Decision, Director Thomas.
Not her, her presentation, so I. So I'm, I'm interested in that, okay. So, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers of our communities, assuming we are talking about. Uh, affordable housing covenant for Ridge at Big Rock Phase Three and Four. Um, for those of you who were here in two thousand twenty of December, we um approved their covenant. Um, it's essentially a redo just for Phase Three and Four. What I did was put in some historical documents only because we have some new council members. So I provided obviously the covenant restricting, we saw an option to purchase and assignment and rent. That's the document that we approved before for Phase One and Two, so it's essentially the same, it just says, said Phase One and Two, it says Phase Three and Four. Also provided a draft site plan of affordable housing units. Um, so that's in Phase Three and Four, so there are so many in Phase Three, and then so many in Phase Four. Um, I also have attached the MOA with Arch Services, so one of the things that we did to manage our affordable housing program. Was enter into agreement with Arch for services. Arch is a group that provides services essentially within a sphere of influence within the region. And there is a membership which we are not part of, and so we directly contract out for about seventy-five dollars an hour for services. At the time that we looked at this, they were not adding any members. Um, that could change, they have staffing capacity issues as well, but we were happy to enter to agreement. So that they could assist us in managing those affordable housing units, or we would have potentially had to hire somebody, or does, or delegated it to a staff member. I also include the Arch presentation materials that were provided in two thousand twenty, that gives you kind of a really good reference. Of what um their services are, I also attached the two thousand twenty-two affordable housing unit on the line, so how that. Particular, how it works, um, I also attached the estimated hours that Arch has provided. As they go through the process, the first part really is the sales, and they do go through a process. With toll holders and the city to set that price and help qualify applicants as well, they also have a website, so you'll see on there if you. If you take a look at their website, um, that they have units that are available for purchase or rent, because they don't just work, obviously, with the city of Duval. Uh, we uh do have essentially a contract with, not to exceed fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. That contract is for five years, and um it does auto renew unless we decide to, you know. Make it for less, make it for more, um, so there is technically a budget impact, um, and then there's the hourly rate. So what they also do is they monitor those housing units every year and report back to the city. We have not had houses yet owned for a year, um, in Phase One and Two. Um, we have two sales so far, and two more are going through the process for a total of four. They waited a little longer to do their affordable housing units in Phase One and Two. That, it does look like that's gonna change in Phase Three and Four, because part of their first permits submitted to us, I think. Um, partly because of our final plot agreement was that we would allow those affordable housing units to come in. Early, early, where the park was done, so they came in with all, all, all of them, so I thought that was pretty good news. There are um about twenty-four affordable housing units, so I think, you know, it's not a big amount, but it's 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 starting, it's making progress. Um, and it could happen again if we enter into development agreement or have future annexations, I think there's a lot of opportunities to continue the program. Um, I don't think I have any more to say, other than this is just a first first touch, I'm not asking you to approve it this evening. Uh, and I do want Danos to take a quick peek, even though it hasn't um changed, I just hope so, can we get his tie on it? And so I will be sending it to him.
Thank you.
Any council questions?
Uh, Councilmember Hope?
So I I was reading through and there's, um, it says that the staff at Duval will be. Um, if that's when they go to resale, then you you'll have to, someone in the city is gonna have to decide the value at that point. Or just Arch still?
Arch does that, but they have to make the final approval, like when they sold the first two houses, I had to say yes or no. As part of that program, but they give us all the paperwork and they set, they go through that process determining the price, okay.
Is there any differences between Phase Three and Four and what we did in Phase One, do? Because it's basically.
It's basically copy paste, yeah. Um, we are gonna have different types of units in this phase, because like Phase One and Two, we have essentially row housing, and this will be. A single family and duplexes, so it'll be a little bit different, so in that sense, the units will be.
Will be the process is the same.
The process is the same.
Excellent, um, Councilmember Naplin?
Yeah, I just am curious how the process went with the first two homes that is, that were sold, and was the cost estimate in line with what we were expecting?
Uh, yes, I think they are being higher because of um interest rates, so. Um, obviously, we'd like to see them sold for less, but they're following the formula. Um, and the units are large, like they they have some larger units that they're utilizing as part of their affordable housing, so families, big families are gonna get to move in. To like four bedroom units and three bedroom units, um, and they do have a mix of them, but they did roll out, they're probably they're a couple of the most expensive, because they were larger. And had more bedrooms, I can see it's not been easy for Arch to find qualified um purchasers, because the units are large. And so I think that's something that Duck City, if we do this again, that we should probably have a conversation on. You know, how how many bed room, but how, you don't want to like overly manage it, but at the same time. Four and five bedroom units are harder to sell. To definitely, because they're gonna be more expensive.
So the billing from Arch, how much it ended up costing for them to do their part, was that in line with what we had expected?
So far, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, any further questions for Director Thomas, Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I, you know, I I find a little little bit difficult to express my concerns uh on affordable housing in general, but I'm gonna try anyway. Um, first of all, there is a cost to it, we can see that here, if the city is paying that cost, the 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 residents of the city are paying. Are supplementing the affordable housing uh to uh, you know, to some extent. And that's true no matter if Arch does it, or or staff does it, or or whoever, it's still uh, it's still the case. Uh, secondly, in my, you know. A small amount of research I've done on affordable housing, I have yet to see a benefit uh to the city. Uh, I think we as the council need to ask ourselves a couple of questions, one is, we represent the citizens of the city, not. Potential new citizens, or not residents, let me say residents, we represent the residents, the existing residents of the city. Uh. I think we need to ask, what good is it doing for us to uh support affordable housing in the city? I know the county uh is holding us, you know, I shouldn't say responsible, but they're certainly encouraging us to have affordable housing. But uh, I frankly don't understand what benefit it's bringing to ball, you know, if uh, anyone hears. Out here feels that they do understand that, uh, I'd like to have an offline conversation with you, but uh, right offhand, I'm not sure what it goes for.
Great, thank you, uh, Mayor Proton McHenry?
Well, one thing that I just thought of with what you were saying, um, is. When the North Hill development was getting built, I was really curious, and I went and checked it out, and just talking to the um people there. I I don't know what their final numbers ended up being, but I think it was at least forty percent of the people buying in North Hill already lived in the city of Duval. So that was one thing that I just thought of, it might enable, yeah, I mean, there are people within the city for sure that qualify, and so maybe they're looking. I don't know, change of scenery, or, you know, their situation has changed, so that was just one thought initially, but.
Anyone else?
I might as well address this. Um, the people that buy affordable homeownership in this county in particular are school teachers, they are nurses. They are single parent, had a household, these are people that. Work on your car, they are people that serve you dinner in a restaurant. That's who affordable housing serves, and by having them in our community. Um, we have access to wage earners um and labor sources and um diversity. And um. Unfortunately, I will be leaving, but I would have that conversation with you.
Good, good.
I I think if you, who who watches the children at the Montessori school? Um, who takes care of the elderly up on Ring Street? That's who we're talking about here, and they're in our community, and um. You know, I I think there is an unfortunate misunderstanding what about affordable housing is, we often get this. This label, uh, that it's the person on the street in the tent in downtown Seattle, and it is, it is quite a bit different than that. But um, in the work that I did with homeownership, it was, it was the population groups I just described. Um, they weren't on welfare, and quite frankly, they usually had credit scores better than people with no money.
Yeah, and and no, and I appreciate that, Councilmember, and like I said, I would like to get an understanding of how this benefits Duval, because I can't explain it right now.
Sure.
Uh, and I suspect there's other councilmembers that can't explain how it benefits uh Duval, so so I will have that conversation with you, thank you.
Sure, thank you, all right, um, unless there's additional questions, we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-six. Community Development Department staffing request, um, and I will note that we are getting close to eight thirty with two more items. Community Development Department staffing request. And I will note that we are getting close to eight thirty with two more items beyond this. So we did have a pretty robust discussion in Cal. So if council's ready to take action once Director Thomas introduces it, I would encourage. That swiftly.
And so again, good evening, mayor and council. This is just going back to the presentation that we had at the Cal. That talked about staffing changes and looking forward to best position our department to do. Current development and long range planning. One thing that maybe I didn't have time to say is, you know. Current development, we're under statutory requirements to review certain projects within ninety and a hundred and twenty days. And if we don't do that, then we're at risk. Where we can be taken to court for not processing them quickly and then we could pay damages. It happens on occasion. The city was actually sued for that, probably my first couple of years here. But we won that because we actually did review it in compliance with state statute. But right now I would say about fifty to sixty percent of our permit applications do not meet that statutory requirement. So we're going to have to just really be careful moving forward and making sure that we put our effort. And we have to put all of our effort in that to, to try and stay current with the requirements. And that's partly why long range planning has come second. But then we are also moving into a phase where we have statutory requirements to update our comp plan. And you do have some risk there if you don't do it. There is some case law out there, Chalilah, Chalilah County. And this was back probably about twenty years ago. You know, did not fare well in a court case and did lose some funding and grant dollars because of it. I don't think that, you know, that the state wants to be punitive with us. They want us just to try and meet that, that update. But we are already in the rears on our parks, trails and open space plan. So we are not eligible for certain grants already for parks and recreation with RCO. And then we have to finish up our SMP or we're not going to be eligible for grants with Department of Commerce. So we're, we're on a precipice of being in non-compliance on, on several facets. So it's one of the reasons why I'm trying to ask for the essentially limited term. Position for the assistant planner slash permit specialist to be considered as a full-time. We had a really good dialogue of, you know, what happens when we, you know, when we have an economic downturn. And just like I shared, the last economic downturn, we had to, you know, we had to release employees. Because we didn't have the money to maintain that. I think we're better positioned now. Because we are bringing in a good amount of revenue and council is looking at, you know, keeping that over for inspections. So that's good. And, you know, we do need to invest in that long range planning because it's our obligation to the state and to our community as well. We have a lot of outdated policies that need to be updated. And this is just the first of, you know, a couple of requests. And I wanted to do the easiest one, meaning which is to fix, you know, to try and fix that so that we're, you know, that we're stable. For the rest of the year.
Thank you. Council member Ho.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to move to suspend the council rules requiring three readings and to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-six. Converting assistant planner permit specialist position from LTE to FTE present second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. This is desperately needed and I know it will definitely help with retention in our department as well. So thank you all for taking that swift action. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty-seven. This is a, a purchase and sale agreement discussion led by Director Lanas, Lanaszewski.
Good evening, mayor and council. Steve Lanaszewski, Public Works. And on behalf of the planning and community development groups. We are applicants in the pool with public projects as any other developer is. So. I would love to have them do our supply and do all the stuff for us, but we do that and have to go through the process. Like through the process like anybody else. So they don't only get work from the outside, they get work from the inside too. They need help and I think they're moving in a great direction. Okay, so I am queued up here. Sorry for the late addition. I'm going to share my screen and see the right one. You have what's before you is a purchase and sale. Agenda bill action. This has been in process for a couple of years. So short story long. It's brought to our attention, there were a couple of parcels in town that the county had listed what we've discovered was in error. And in that process, they said, oh, by the way, there's a piece of land out here that, you know, we're going to be interested in. Getting rid of at some point. Well, they literally emailed at the end of the week last week and said, hey, by the way. This piece of land, which is right at the curve of Cherry Valley Road. If you're heading westbound, you're passing the elementary school, you got dirty farm on your right. And then you make the trek down to council member Shaffer's favorite intersection. That land there is owned by someone in private. It is now in the rears on taxes. It will be going to auction. And the county says, hey, if you want to buy it as a city and it's adjacency to the right of way, it's, it's yours for the taxes owed as well as the, the fee that's listed. So pretty simple amount of process. We, you know, normally you'd go into an exec session. That's not necessary, in my opinion. Nobody else can buy it. We're not negotiating. The price is fixed. So. I'm sorry, I am not first at using this without my three screens. The, the, the trials and tribulations of the overly technology. That is what I really have for you. If there are questions, I'm more than happy. It would be great to have this happen tonight. So we can tell the county before they send it to auction.
Council member Isaacson?
So I'm excited to approve this, but I want to share, understand. The reason why I'm excited about it is, are we saying the city could possibly then take Cherry Valley Road and go straight to a T stop on the third three?
However, if it were to help us add a sidewalk, bike lane, other elements in that region, yes. Retaining walls will probably be. An insurmountable requirement for anything we do there and then we don't have to obtain the land later. Going straight through would have a ripple effect of access back towards the school by, by all. Calculations without doing calculations. So yeah, it's, it's not going to solve a major problem, but it's going to help with other elements as time goes on. And limit something from happening by the county. I'm not sure if you are familiar with spike strips, but you know, people can buy these little things at cheap and then try to sell them off to the adjacent property owner. City, agency, municipality for, you know, other prices that you may or may not want to tolerate because it does have an excessive value, but I think it was forty-eight thousand dollars. So.
Right. Council member Shaffer?
Yeah, first of all, the county is basically giving this to us. So, so, you know, I, I. Don't think there's, there should be too much debate on our part, but the, you know, by city ownership of this, we, we can, you know. Zone it such that we can prevent housing there. Certainly don't want to see houses pop up there. We can prevent McDonald's from building the site there. That may never happen, but nonetheless, and more realistically, as Director Lanaszewski just said. We can use it to our advantage to things like whatever wider sidewalks and things like that. To create maybe a safer environment in that, in that part of town. And keep it in mind, our, our dog park is, is, well, basically right there, just, just up the road there. The historic cemetery is adjacent to that. And as Steve said, the school is just right up the road as well. So I think it behooves us to buy this piece of property. As basically a giveaway price.
Thank you. Director Thomas?
I was just going to add two things to note. This property is not missing the elements. So we would need to annex it to zone it. If perchances city doesn't choose to purchase it and it sells off, it would likely develop out under reasonable use with a single family.
Does council want to take action on this this evening? Oh, sorry, council member Isaacson?
So we, what can maintenance cost to this piece of property?
We mow the shoulder now. So currently there wouldn't be anything extra. The other things that could always arise, it is steep slopes, right? So if you had landslide, that would come down onto the highway, we'd have to work with that.
But the current routine maintenance is already.
We, we don't do anything except maintain the front edge of it. Yeah. Yep. So none, I guess. In addition, but there is always risk with ownership of more property.
Mr. Kenny?
Just want to, just, just, just learning about any phase two, any environmental issues, they, you said slope stability.
Slope stability is the only thing we have noticed. I, we didn't find anything. The county didn't have much record. There has been very little, none. As far as activity on that land. So. I know you want to tea. We all do.
Great. Council member Isaacson?
Can I do a motion?
Yes, you may.
I moved to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two thirty-seven authorized on here to sign a purchase and sale agreement for potential. Realignment reconstruction portal.
Great. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to our, our final agenda bill for the evening, Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty. Clarifying use of ARPA funds. Director Lanaszewski.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Steve Lanaszewski, Public Works. I'm not sure if there's any citizens on, but hello to you as well. This is another walk-on and it is an apology from myself. I was not here at the last meeting. There was some items listed. That were listed in a way that was a per item cost. And we had anticipation of multiple items being purchased. So I wanted to clarify with all of you. This is specific to, what I have in writing in front of you is the light towers. So the LED light towers are an element that we do and have used. What you have before you is a five thousand dollar per cost. We, we have in the last couple of years rented light towers for large events. So we'll stand a light tower, that is a mobile light tower in the park to have lighting. Because we have pushed some of the summer stage events into the later part of summer. So it starts earlier and there's no lights. So it's temporary lighting for events. One in the park area, one at the trail where it meets the park, another one at the trail where it meets the trail and up to the depot park parking lot. So it's, it's kind of protection and lighting for those types of activities. I wasn't here, but I think it was a generally an easy discussion. The need for three, I probably could simply be argued for two. I did confirm with Cass who was involved with some of the larger concert events last season. So two is fine. I wouldn't be opposed to three, but we also have to store things. So there is always a balance. I think there's enough light where we can make it work with two. So with that said, I want to bring that to your attention. And another item I didn't make note of with highlighting in yellow, but I should. Receiving the final quote prior to purchase on, and the reason I left this in Word in a PDF for you is. The stage expansion. I listed at seventeen thousand. Refresh quote today had, did not have freight in that or all the tax. So the total is. Twenty-one thousand five eighty-seven with freight and tax on a sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollar stage. Expansion. So I, I fear that I made that mistake. And maybe not once, but we will double check other things as we go. Since they didn't tell me the prices changed, but for some reason the quote I received when I was quoting all this out fairly quickly. Didn't have all those fun details in it. So that would take a motion to amend to discuss the stage. I'm not sure we'll be here for Duval days. They are saying for five weeks. But right now for that Agenda Bill of seventeen thousand, I would be not eligible to do that. So those are, those are my two pauses to share and divulge to you as we try to spend the money on the economic development enhancement score.
These things happen. Council member Shaffer?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on what we're going to be voting for tonight. And that's the. The five thousand dollar additional cost for lighting or are you also requesting the additional cost for the stage?
So, yes, great question. What you had in writing in front of you that was emailed yesterday was the one additional light stand.
Yeah.
So that was another five hour. What I am bringing to your attention additionally right now is a quote I received. Third, which is today on the final bill for the stage expansion, which it's attachments that go on to the front side of the stage to increase the area.
This is the ones, the stage risers to the span of the mobile stage.
And the total was seventeen thousand, right? Yep. So the list price is sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. Freight is three thousand twenty-three dollars eighty-two cents. Tax, one thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-three cents per grand. Total of twenty-one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and five cents.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Naplin? You're, you're unmute, council member.
To follow up on what council member Shaffer said, the dollar amount we're approving. Is not actually the dollar amount that's up there. It's actually about four thousand dollars more.
That's not correct. That's not correct. As it stands right now, the Agenda Bill is simply for the lighting towers. Director Lanaszewski has brought forward the other identification. If council wants to add and amend this Agenda Bill. To include that cost, you're welcome to do so. But he was being in the interest of transparency and identifying. Mistakes with, you know, lack of time, et cetera. He's bringing that forward and being very transparent with the group on that.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. I just wasn't sure if we had to do something extra to make that happen or what exactly was being asked of us.
So if you would like to, council would like to go ahead and expand the budget for the stage riders to accommodate for that new quote. And apply for the tower, then we would need a motion for the tower, the additional lighting tower. And then that additional amount up to a maximum amount so that's, that Director Lanaszewski could move forward with both. Otherwise, you're welcome to wait until the next meeting if you so choose. But it would be nice to have an opportunity as well to make sure that those stage riders, if something good did happen, if they came in before Duval days, that would be fantastic.
So the new number just was amended on your screen. It is desired.
Okay, so now my, I, that actually was a follow-up on council member Shaffer's question, but I did have a separate question. And it has to do with. With all of this additional equipment, storing it, there's a cost to set it up. Is there an expectation that. You know, if other groups are using the stage, that automatically they can request that, well, they need the stage risers. Or, well, we need the lighting too, or how, how is this all going to be coordinated on the staff time? To deploy all of this equipment? And are we going to see a, a new fee schedule that reflects some of these different pieces of equipment? Like the portable fencing, some of the events we have are internal, you know, and events put on by the DCC. You know, those are really our events, but there's a lot of other events who I think would want to use these pieces of equipment. And we, you know, they're separate entities. And are we just going to start having them available? Just as an add-on for free or anyway, I, I'm just trying to understand. We're accumulating an awful lot of equipment here. Cleachers, stages, fencing, lighting. We have to store it. Bleachers, stages, fencing, lighting, we have to store it. It's, it's a lot and. I'm just, I, I'd like to have an understanding of how this is all going to work in the bigger picture. I, I, I'm in support of getting a second tower. But yeah, still a little bit puzzled.
Okay, so I'll do the rundown real quick. Bleachers are going to be, uh, not fixed mounted per se, but they'll be left annually at the ball field. So we'll be currently adding to space that's not used up there, moving some things around to have more seating available. And when we need them for an event, we bring them down. Um, they're light, they're aluminum, they travel fast, unlike the ones we rented in the past, which were. Quite an act of Congress. Um, so those don't, and they're safe, so they don't bother me at all. Uh, let's call that a no increase in workload. Um, porta potties not up, it's just paying a bill. Uh, curtains is just, they're already there, so we're trying to replace those. I have to work with Cass on what stage modules for use as risers or standalone stage. I, I fear this may be redundant with stage risers, so I will check on that. Um, portable light towers, they're about the size of a, two tables put together in this building here, so they're not very large. They fold up, they are tow behind, they're on wheels, they're smaller than a tow behind generator that we have now. So we will have space for those. They are important. I, I can't, no one has asked what else we can use it for. But emergency hours after work call out, uh, large events that happen where we need to see what's happening in the dark. Uh, what is it, three, four, five months out of the year, it's dark, more hours of the day than it's light. So they are usable, not just for community events and, and that, uh, that kind of activity. They are going to be usable for, you know, deploying work for the city and its staff. Um, portable fencing, that one, I do have the same concerns as, you know, likely the rest of you. Because, you know, two hundred linear feet of eight-foot section fence sits on a stack, kind of like a stack of chairs, but you've got to put it somewhere. So, um, the good news is it's durable grade material, non-painted and won't rust. So we have options. Um, we do need to get some things moved out of the wall field, storage container or facility because there's turf in there and other things. So yeah, there's, there's a concern, but I think it sounds to me like these items were passed and I. Maybe could have put more info on how it would all be handled. So those are the real things that are adding, uh, storability needs, which I think the fencing is the most. Difficult to manage and will be something we'll have to work on.
And, and I just want to point out, the lighting does not have anything to do with stage rental. Um, so lighting is a city asset. So, um, there's no proposal to change our current use policy with the stage. Um, so that should be, um, a question that should be able to be pushed off the table at that point.
And yeah, I, I'm sorry, I did not add to the stage. The new stage relative to the old stage is lighter, is easier to move, manage, set up. Uh, takes way less manpower. I believe you called, spoke with Gavin on that one. Uh, luckily, uh, you know, former crew lead, now product manager can, can help out in all aspects of what we're, what we have going on. Uh, and I think the expansion of the stage, those pieces fold up and they are stored inside. So they, they will be with the stage. Now they will be problematic when we don't need them for use. So then we're going to have to move them out, store them somewhere adjacent. But I think for the most part, the intent for the summer is they are there, they will be covered, but they will be mounted to the stage, fixed for summer stage and left in place. So there's not like a, uh, redundant take-up, take-down, take-up, take-down of that additional square footage. Yes, we appreciate the thought. There's always more work.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Let's see, uh, Director, you said the state, that, well, let me see if I heard you correctly. The item titled stage modules for use as risers for standalone stage. And then the second one below that, stage risers to expand the mobile stage. Are those the two you think might be done?
I know, I know what we just talked about, which is the, the stage itself. It's twenty-one thousand five eighty-seven. I, again, I have to talk, I, I didn't create this list, right? We were asked to provide some costs for someone else who no longer, you know, is here. So without reading in mind, I need to ask a couple of folks what that really is. I, I do think it was for some small stage action, maybe around city hall. Where you would have Duval days and you have the NC and that kind of activity. But I will, uh, I guess, don't worry all that much. I have no plan to purchase that yet because I haven't really figured out what it is. But I can report back to it. Not in a huge area, but I would like to know what I'm trying to get.
Okay, good. No, thank you. With that in mind, I would suggest a vote on the agenda bill as is, which is only the, uh, additional lighting, uh, tower.
Right. Um, would you like to make a motion, Council?
I, I'm, I move to approve agenda bill twenty-two thirty-eight and authorize mayor to have purchase of one additional light stand in addition to the one previously approved.
Right, do we have a second?
Take it, Councilmember Isaacson.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, we have no, uh, further business. However, we do have, uh, one of our members who is leaving us after this meeting. And, uh, that is Councilmember Langley. And, um, so I wanted to take a moment to say thank you, um, Councilmember Langley. And I've had a very complicated relationship over the years, but I think, uh, we can both agree that we care deeply about one another.
That's true.
And, uh, you will be missed. Um, you're spunk. Um, your experience, um, your care and commitment to the community, um, and to the city as a whole. Um, will be missed and I will particularly miss that you won't be in Washington State anymore. Um, so thank you so much for your service and your time here at the city of Duval, um, doing your best work for our community. And I wanted to open it up for anyone else that wanted to say a few words. Uh, we'll start with Councilmember Schaefer.
So I'm, I'm going to use the less formal, uh, reference to Councilmember Langley. Dot, thank you, uh, you know, not only for your, your, uh, excellent work at the council, but, uh, for me personally, you were one of my mentors, uh, as I came on to the council. You helped me understand many of the more complex situations, uh, financial situations and organizational. Uh, situations that we have to, uh, deal with there. And, uh, I realized that I barely scratched the surface of your knowledge, so it's unfortunate you ended up leaving because I did hope to, uh, pick your brain a bit more. But, uh, but you've been a great help for me personally, so thank you.
Mayor Porton?
You had your hand.
I did. Oh, please, our heart. Um, you know, I think I already told you a lot of what I'll say now, which is I'm not done learning from you yet. Um, you know, but I'll take you up on your invitation to call you anytime. Um, you've just been, you've brought such a unique perspective to council and such a valuable skill set. That I hope we've taken advantage of adequately. I don't know that in, any amount of time would really be enough. So we're just thankful for the time you've given us and everything you've contributed.
I appreciate that, thanks. Councilmember Isaacson and then Hope?
I'll be informal to Dot. I just would, I'll rather say thank you for, you've been here obviously way before me, but. We had several phone calls before I interviewed for an open slot and also for a ran, uh, for the general election. So you definitely are highly encouraging and motivating me to stay the course and go forward. So. And it's been rewarding and I appreciate your time outside of council hours, answering questions, disagreeing with me, agreeing with me. Whatever you want to call it, it's professional relationship. It's, it's very high up there. Appreciate it very much. I'm sorry to see you leave Duval, Washington, great, but leaving Duval, it's going to be very sad. But I hope it's, um, for you, very, uh, personally, personal move that's to your benefit. You deserve it.
Well, my husband just bought a house and he was, he only walked through it for thirty minutes. So I'm not really sure how this is going to turn out. It's actually a comparatively small adventure considering the time I've been with him.
Whatever the adventure is, you deserve it.
I think what she means to say is she's taken on her husband on quite a few adventures over the last few years and now it's her turn.
I think that's, that's the truth, that's the truth of it, for sure.
And Councilmember Hope?
So I started writing down some things that I'm going to miss and I, and they were so similar to things that you guys have already talked about, but one of them is your knowledge. You know, you just, you brought so much to the council and I, um, and your commitment to the community and your, you've. You put in so many hours in all our committees and, um, I just have loved all our conversations we've had. My goodness. It's like we can talk about anything and we don't always agree on stuff.
God's supposed to.
And so it's just great. And I'm going to miss that bouncing stuff off you. I'm going to miss that a lot, so.
Wow, I'm going to miss you too.
Yeah, more real estate discussions.
Yes.
Councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, you know, echoing, um, a lot of what was said here today, I think, you know, Dot, I, the biggest thing that, you know, I'll miss is off, obviously the opportunity cost of, of sort of not being able to take advantage of, of some of that knowledge. I think, you know, we've crossed paths at other places around the artist community earlier with the planning commission here. And I, and I think, you know, it, it is obvious in the conversations that there's both a wealth of knowledge, but also, you know, a lot of passion level issues. It's, it's genuine, uh, a sense of genuine, genuineness you bring to the conversation, which you don't always get. I mean, oftentimes books are coming at it from a particular bias or point of view. And I think being able to, to take your life experiences, your professional knowledge, and then sort of, you know, love the community and, and just the broader. Even beyond Duval, because it's obviously around Washington as well. So again, I wish there was more time to, to leverage some of that. But, you know, I appreciate it and I wish you well on, on some of your next journey, uh, wherever that may take you.
Be interesting. Hopefully it's not like doing plumbing repairs and house.
And of course, last but not least, Councilmember Napland?
I don't really have anything eloquent to say. I just, um, this is really hard saying, it's not a goodbye. I can assure you, Dorothy, you have not gotten rid of me. I will be calling you and picking your brain and, um. Yeah, I always, um, you know, I, I think as Michelle had said, you know, we didn't always agree on everything. We agreed on a lot. Um, but I always learn something from our conversation and sometimes, you know, even mulling over a story that Dorothy, you told me. You know, I'll learn more from it just thinking about it later too, you know, um. Anyway, I wish you the best and definitely it's not a goodbye. We'll stay in touch, so.
Thank you. Um, Director Thomas?
I definitely wanted to say something because I've had the pleasure of working with Dot really before. You know, she even got on to council and in my hometown, we give out what's called the Spark Club, Community Award, that every three years. If I had that, I'd give it to you because it's a spark of a conversation. It's the spark of a commitment. And maybe you'll have a spark plug in your box in the next week or so to remind you. Of what you've given to us, what you've imparted on us, but your spark plug, I really appreciate it.
I'm happy to do it. The, um, I came to, uh. I, I, if I think of, I might even come up with the exact date. It was, uh, May of twenty-seventeen. And the city had this big town hall thing and I wanted to find out, you know, what was going on because the Duval I knew. Was when I lived off the Woodville Duval Road and there was a little bookstore and quilt store and all that. And I, first thing I went to was Public Works, Boyd Benson. He proceeds to tell me that we have plenty of infrastructure for all this growth. And I'm, I'm kind of like, and I, I said, well, what about, you know, but annexations don't pay for themselves. Not a problem. It's, it's all under control. And then I like walked further down and there's Laura with her little map. Which I still have and with all her little projects on it and I'm going, holy crap. And, and it's like, and it, and that's where the, that's where the, um. Deep fear, not because I'm afraid of development, because I've been in development all forever, but fear that the city wouldn't have all that it needed to take on that growth. And, um, I definitely argued with the mayor over some of this and I kept saying, it's going to implode, it's going to implode. I, I think maybe she wouldn't say implode, but I think she might say that I was on to something. But we have to get out of this real estate cycle and, um, it's, it's not a choice. We have legal mandates. We have, um, we don't want to lose opportunities for funds. So we're just going to have to take some time and take the excess revenue that we get right now. We're going to have to invest in ourselves. And if we don't do it, we'll pay a much higher price. And I will be back to Duval. I plan to be back in September. Um, so, uh, um, I'll be checking up on you. And, um, there's more than one person from the, you know, my past that I still keep in touch with, you know, years and years later. Just calling like, what do you think about this? You know, well, what do you think about this? What do you think? You know, I, I do my whole question thing. And, um, so anybody's welcome to give me a call. I also have this still on the same home phone number. But we are going back to New York to, for my, uh, my husband to be with his family. And, um, I looked at my Medicare signup thing the other day and my, uh, social security wages over the years. It's like a ping pong ball. They go up, they go down, they go up, they go down. It's all because he just let me work on whatever I wanted to. And this one's for him. So, thank you. I, it's been an honor. It really has. Even though I know I'm difficult. I am, but, uh. But I do remember that the first time I talked to Steve, he had on new socks.
So weird.
Thank you. I don't know what you're doing after this, Dot, but, um, I know Stop is open, the kitchen's open till nine-thirty. So, uh, I would, if you're up for it.
Sure, I can do it.
I would like to invite everyone, um, out to celebrate Dot with no city business allowed. Um, only no city business because I'm sure there will be more than four. Um, and I'm a very good gatekeeper, uh, as former Councilmember Brittany can attest to. So, um, with that, they are adjourned and let's celebrate Dot.
Thank you.
I don't know. See what's going on. Yeah, if we don't know anything, I don't know.